Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the Town Council meeting of Monday, January 2nd, 2023. Call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. I'd ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three, attendance. I'm joined in studio by Counselor Butt, Vice Chair McLean, Counselor Smith Galvin, Counselor Danahue, and Counselor Vincent. It looks like, is that Counselor Dombrowski I see coming online? Sherry?
Yes, of course.
Great, thank you. So we have a full slate today. Item number four, public engagement. I have two people signed up for public engagement. Just as a reminder to folks, we ask you to please limit your remarks to three minutes to introduce yourself with your name and address before you speak. And of course, the council may or may not choose to engage with questions at this time. The first individual I had signed up online was Haley McHatten-Baloo. Do we have, oh, you're right here. Are you still interested in speaking?
I was just in case, but I have to do this.
Okay, great. So we'll have you, actually, we'll have you hold off just until we go through the budget for the Conservation Commission if that's okay. Great. And then the second person I had was Bob Brooks. If you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphones, Mr. Brooks.
Can you hear me?
We can.
My name is Bob Brooks, 7 June Circle. At a recent town meeting, Mr. Mayo, our Town Administrator stated that Wakefield is in great financial shape. That is good news. And I am here to urge the Town Council to support the Conservation Commission upcoming budget. This would be an appropriate time to increase their budget, which is well below what is realistically needed to protect the interests of the town. As many of you are aware, as a 48-year resident of this town, I have been attending the Conservation Committee meetings concerning the NEMT school since February of 2021. That is almost three years. I have also attended the NEMT site walks regarding the wetlands with our Conservation Agents Rebecca and Elaine, along with several committee members. Many of these site visits have been on Saturdays and Sundays. The same goes for the Article 97 land swap. I have seen firsthand the dedication that this group has put forth for the environmental protection of Wakefield. The demand on their time is overwhelming. It is inconceivable that Wakefield only has a part-time position for a Conservation Agent. It is time for this Town Council to make a strong commitment and show your support to the Conservation Department and unanimously approve their 2025 budget request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Do we have anyone else for public engagement? Sherry, anyone online?
No, no one else.
All right. Moving on then to item number five, fiscal year 2025 budgets. So we have a slate of budgets today. Mr. Mayo, do you have any sort of opening remarks before we start going through the line items?
Sure, just very quick and then Kevin will go through the budgets. As we talked about also, as is our practice, all of these budgets where they are considered Town Hall budgets in the FinCom world have been reviewed by the Town Hall Finance Committee, Town Hall Subcommittee. And I believe Mr. Kenny is on and may want to say a few words, said he was going to be online. So anyways, we've gone through all these budgets, Kevin and I, and with the Finance Committee. When you combine these budgets with the budgets that the Town Council heard on January 8th, we are currently looking at a combined increase over last fiscal year of 2.6%. I will caution the Town Council, however, that to the extent that any of these budgets have employees in the Clerical Union, we have not settled the clerical contract yet. It runs through June 30th of this year. We will start probably meeting, I would say, next week as the Clerical. That was for you, Mr. Brooks. I didn't shut it off. The Clerical Union will be giving me some dates at the end of this week, so I do anticipate coming back yet. But I think we feel pretty good at this point in time, coming in at this level, knowing that we have some other issues on the horizon, including a less than robust state aid, at least at this point, coming in. So without further ado, I'll have Kevin go through them. Unless, Mr. Kenny, did you want to add anything?
I was going to say, Mr. Kenny, if you want to add anything from the Finance Committee perspective before we start going through.
Yeah, thanks. No, again, I think I'll do what I did last time. Again, 2.6, a pretty comparable number to prior years. I know Steve and Kevin will highlight some of the, and I'm sure you folks will anyway, just looking at it from a purely numbers perspective. Our group went through it pretty diligently and found that the Town Administrator's requests, I think, and we don't take votes on this, but usually if there are objections, we speak up, right? So I think you're looking at some well-presented budgets that are well-thought-out, and I'm sure you'll have a robust discussion about them. For a bottom-line perspective, you know, like Steve said, I think we're pretty much on track for where we've been in recent years with this group of budgets at least.
Great.
One more thing before you jump to Kevin.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I forgot to say this. The Veterans Budget, which is, I think, fifth or sixth on your agenda this evening, we are going to request to bring that back at a different date because there is still a little bit more work to do with that based on some comments at the Veterans Advisory Board and the liaison towards them. So we're going to bring that back after we have some further meetings with them.
Okay. Terrific. Well, let's kick it off with item 5A, the Treasury Department Budget. Mr. Gill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First budget is the Treasurer's Budget. This budget, we are recommending a decrease for fiscal 2025 of $1,568. Under Personal Services, there is a decrease of $2,228, but it does include a 3% increase for the Town Treasurer and a step increase for a member of the Clerical Union. We did have a longtime employee retire at the beginning of the year. That's why there is a decrease in this overall Personal Service Budget. Couple small increases for under expenses. We increased printing and binding $150. Office supplies $500 in the dues line item, $10. Major expenses within this budget, $13,000 for tax title, which is used for attorney's fees and land court costs. $7,500 for bank charges, which is used to maintain the town's bank accounts and the cost of checks. And we do collect money and revenue within this department. We collect tax title revenue. So far, year-to-date, we've collected over $122,000. Last year, we collected $234,000. Total budget request for fiscal '25 is $237,756.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Any questions from the council? All right, seeing none. If there's no objection from the council, I'm going to hold off votes until we get through the entire slate of budgets. If there are any budgets that we do want to take separately for voting purposes, please speak up and we can do that. But hopefully, we'll save ourselves, you know, 12 roll call votes. Great, let's move on then to item number five, the Conservation Commission. Mr. Gill and Mr. Green, if you wouldn't mind sitting up and we'll give you a chance to speak once the budget's presented. I'm sorry, if you wouldn't mind sitting up. I'm sorry, did I, I may have misstated your name. I apologize.
Peter Miller.
Sorry, Mr. Miller.
That's all right. So Peter Miller, I'm a member of the Conservation Commission and I'm here with four other members, three other members of the Commission, Jim Luciani, Haley McHatten, and Teresa Belmonte. And I'm here tonight with my colleagues to request that the Conservation Commission's proposed budget be increased by approximately...
I can actually hold off just a second just to let Mr. Gill present the budget and then we'll come back.
Oh, I see.
If that's okay.
Yes.
Please. Mr. Gill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Conservation Commission Budget for fiscal '25, we are recommending an increase of $1,547. In Personal Services, the increase is $1,532, which is a 3% increase for the two part-time agents. Little history on this department, there were two people working 10 hours a week for 20 hours. We increased that last year to one person working 19 hours a week, one person working five hours a week. And if you see on the Excel spreadsheet that there is a difference between the department request and the Town Administrator's request, we are also able to offset this budget with wetlands filing fees, the amount for last year and both this current year, $4,500. Main expenses within this budget, the travel expense, $835, which is for seminar and training, office supplies for various supplies and software. Total budget request for fiscal 2025 is $61,078, with $56,578 coming from tax levy and $4,500 from available funds.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Mr. Miller, please go ahead now and sorry for cutting you off earlier.
Oh, okay. No, no, no. So I am here tonight to, with my colleagues, to request that the proposed budget, from what is proposed, be increased by approximately $25,000 to solely for the purpose of accommodating additional hours for its principal employee, which is our Conservation Agent. And this would effectively, you know, turn the position of Conservation Agent from a part-time position into a full-time position. And having a full-time Conservation Agent really is the norm in most towns in Massachusetts, including adjacent towns such as Reading, Linfield, and Saugus. And so, you know, this would, this increase and then the ability to have a full-time agent would just be really putting us in line with the norm in the state and adjacent towns. I think the, you know, the position of the Conservation Agent in Wakefield is just so vital to the functioning of the Conservation Commission. You know, our State Wetlands Protection Act has complicated rules applicable to development in environmentally sensitive areas, and they're designed to balance development interests with protection of the environment. And our Conservation Agents have very, very specialized experience that really the members of the Commission don't have, and it's absolutely necessary in dealing with the complex, the science issues that come before the Commission. And we're lucky that we have two longtime agents who have jobs shared for years. And if the proposal is increased, Elaine Vreeland would work, would continue to work five hours per week, and Rebecca Davis, who is budgeted for 19 hours a week, would go up to 30 hours per week, and that would bring the total hours to 35, which is the equivalent of a full-time position. And I think that, you know, I guess we, I've been on the Commission for 14 years, and I know we have a lot of longevity, both with our agents and with our commissioners, and, you know, our hope is that people see the value that the Conservation Commission brings to helping make sure that development in Wakefield is done in a manner that to the fullest extent possible is consistent with the environmental sensitivities that accompany, that a lot of the development accompanies when, given that a lot of the best land has been developed and a lot of the new projects do occur in environmentally sensitive areas. So I really appreciate and thank you for your consideration on this.
Well, thank you. Could you just speak for a moment, just maybe educate us a little bit on the division of labor between Ms. Vreeland and Ms. Davis in terms of how the work is split up between the two individuals currently in place?
Well, it's interesting. They have different, I think they have different perspectives, but...
May I have one of my colleagues?
I would ask you just to come up to the microphone so that we can hear you on screen.
Elaine pretty much takes care of the site walks. She does that on Fridays. Or she does, or if there's someone that has an issue with a tree or things like that, smaller things like that, that Rebecca doesn't have to keep running in and out, so it's more efficient that way. Rebecca does pretty much everything else. She's got a ton of things that she's doing. I mean, I can tell you some of the stuff that she does. You know, the first thing, so I just want to let you know, I've been doing this for 39 years now. So I've seen this thing grow from nothing to what it is today, and I mean, the regulations keep getting stricter. They're not getting lenient, they're getting stricter. And it's hard for people to accept conservation in a way because they know it's something that they're going to have to deal with on their property. I mean, we've gone to plenty of places and, you know, the people are very nervous about it. They're afraid that someone's going to stop them from doing something on their property. But we do sit down, Elaine and Rebecca are excellent at speaking with these people or any resident, and trying to educate them on the process, how it works and why we're doing it. Because we're doing it to help the neighbors, and they just don't, themselves and the neighbors. So they don't normally, you know, consider that, they don't think about that. They think it's hurting them, not, you know, you're preventing, hurting both parties. So I don't know how I go on that, but I mean, it's, I mean, the first thing that we go through is to draft an order. I'm sorry, I got the wrong paper. Well, the first thing we do is, when we get an application, she checks it for minimum requirements. Once that's done, it goes to, it goes to the board to be looked at. But before that, Rebecca will go out and she will research every, all the resource areas to make sure what applies and what doesn't apply. She prepares the paperwork for us so that we can look at it and see if we agree with it or if we want to make changes. So she basically supplies us with all the information we need to make the decisions. I could go on, there's a million things that they, there's a lot of things that keep getting added to these requirements. We have stormwater regulations, we have the Wetlands Protection Act, which in itself is, is pretty much, takes a lot of expertise. So we have to, we usually end up hiring a lot of people to do that job. And I don't know if there's anything else that someone wants to say.
No, that's helpful just to understand, again, the context, because it is sort of a job-sharing relationship.
I do have some, I can give you guys one of these too. It's a little chart that one of the Commissioners made up that shows the amount of part-time work and full-time work that everyone's doing, and it's got a lot of the towns around here, so you could, you know, just look at it and see how we relate to the rest of the communities. And I have another one that, I made copies, so you can have one of this too. This shows where Wakefield stands on wetlands files in relation to other towns and how many agents they have working for them. So I'll leave these so you can get them to you that way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayo, can you maybe provide some context around the Town Administrator request just before we open it up for questions from the council?
Sure, sure. So, you know, we look very carefully at every department, every department request, and as you know, I like to run things lean. I've been maybe criticized for that before, but I think that maybe helped our good financial standing that Mr. Brooks looked at. With this department in particular, those two forms that Jim just talked about, I haven't seen. So maybe there would have been, and you haven't seen them either, obviously, so I haven't seen any analytics on this. But I will say that before we, and we did add, we did increase hours last year, as you recall. Before we go to a, you know, to a full-time position, we like to see, you know, what's happening, you know, as far as, you know, real time, what's happening. And if we need to, as we have in both fiscal '23 and fiscal '22, and we probably will in fiscal '24, if you look at here, there's some big projects and we have to, you know, pay extra hours to handle that, that's through a number of items. Either it's, I find money in other budgets to handle that, because work needs to be done, and I understand that, we might have to some extra hours there. Or we go for reserve fund transfer, and we've done that, you know, the last couple of years when we've needed to, when there have been some big projects. Certainly, if there are big projects, that's going to, maybe will take more time. This year, this fiscal year, we're probably looking at, at this point, halfway through the year, we're probably looking at a slight, could be a slight overage because of some of the big projects we've had, because work needs to be done. That's kind of how I've handled it in the past. I will also say that another thing that we look very carefully at is that it's not only this department, it's not only, you know, this department, but when you do go to a full-time position, then you do kick in the ability to benefits issue. So that's a question, so there's another budgetary, you know, hit on another budget. So we kind of look at that very carefully and try not to add if we don't have, we feel we can do it another way. So that's kind of my philosophy here.
Great. Thank you. And again, just before we go to council questions, Mr. Kenny, did you have any particular comments on the Conservation Commission budget from a FinCom Subcommittee perspective?
Again, because there's no vote, I want to be careful not to speak directly for my colleagues, but I can report that, you know, I think there was a lot of hesitation to essentially, you know, spend the money, introduce, you know, the concept of a full-term employee with benefits where we don't have one, and it didn't seem like there was a ton of upside benefit to the town in terms of, you know, man-hours. It's kind of an interesting way to divide the labor. But, you know, I'm glad you focused up the Conservation Commission here, but I think there is real hesitation to leap toward, you know, exactly the issue that Mr. Mayo just discussed.
Great, thank you, Mr. Kenny. Let's move to the council now for any questions. Counselor Dombrowski, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone, from where I am.
Is this like early morning or just a really late bedtime?
Oh, yeah, I'm in London, so it's 12, almost 12:30.
Late bedtime, then. Please go ahead.
I had a question, actually, for anyone, I guess, on the Commission. So we're talking about these two employees, Ms. Vreeland and Ms. Davis. So are you suggesting that one scenario could be that we would eliminate the five hours for Ms. Vreeland and add those to Ms. Davis?
No, the suggestion was that she would, she would continue to work. Her maximum commitment that she can make is five hours, and so the additional hours would be solely allocated to Ms. Davis.
A total of 35 hours.
A total of 35 hours between the two. Thirty and five.
I understood that. And so I guess to my colleagues, you know, I look at this and I spoke with Mr. Mayo about this prior, I look at this from the perspective of, we have increased the hours by 20% over the last year already, and that's not insignificant from my perspective. And while Conservation Commission may take the position that, well, it's small money in the grand scheme of the budget, I understand the argument, but that argument isn't how we function. Because if every physician came to us and said, oh, we're just looking for a little bit, little bit more, you know, 20% here and there, that would create this absolutely unsustainable budget creep. And I think we, I think to Mr. Mayo's point, when we get into the business of having full-time employees and adding FTE to our payroll, we're not just talking about this $25,000 increase, we're also talking about benefits, and benefits, and Mr. Gill and Mr. Mayo would correct me, but, you know, I would say that all-in, when you consider health insurance, retirement, and the like, you're probably looking at another like 30% at least on top of whatever someone's pay is in terms of the actual financial outlay for the town. So I don't see it here. I think that the approach we've taken is a prudent one. In the event there are projects that are demanding special attention, then I think bringing in additional hours as necessary or bringing in some of the outside does make sense. But as a general operating, you know, proposition that, well, just because, you know, other towns have it, as I see it, we have already 24 hours, right, between the two staffers that we have, not looking to make a fluctuation between the two staffers. Candidly, I think two staffers dividing up the job doesn't necessarily lead to the greatest efficiencies, but that, that all being said, you've got a 20% increase in hours in one year, and I think that many other departments would be begging for a 20% increase in hours across the board. So, you know, I'm not convinced there's any data to support, you know, we're a numbers council, I think we're driven by the numbers. I'm not convinced that any of the information that's been provided suggests that this is an imperative or identifies where the value add is. The Conservation Commission by all accounts has been able to do the job with the resources that it's been provided with, and so I am in line with the Subcommittee from FinCom, and I don't think it's appropriate that we go above what we've budgeted through Town Administrators' recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dombrowski. Other questions from the council? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Trines. Mr. Luciani, would you come back to the table kindly, please? First, I want to thank you for your 39 years of service on the Conservation Commission, and thank you for the letter that you submitted to us, and thank you for taking the time, along with Teresa, to talk to me today for about 45 minutes. In your 39 years on the Conservation Commission, how many times in the past have you asked for a full-time employee?
I don't think we've ever asked for a full-time employee.
How long have the two Conservation Agents been employed with us? Do you remember about how long?
Elaine has been like 20 years, and Rebecca is around 16, I think.
And from looking at the website for the Massachusetts Conservation Commission, it looks like 100 municipalities throughout Massachusetts currently have a full-time Conservation Agent. I also discussed with you today that I looked at the Fall 2023 Massachusetts Conservation Commission Conference that took place last fall, and there was a workshop that was entitled Conservation Agents in Distress. And the reason that they had that workshop was because of the alarmingly high turnover of new conservation staff in Massachusetts. So to me, it seems like it's important for us to keep our experienced Conservation Agents in place. The other thing, if you could expand on this a little bit, you indicated that the Conservation Agents come to all your meetings?
Yes.
And they help prepare for the meetings?
Yes.
What's their role in preparing for the meetings and helping at the meetings?
Well, the first thing they do is, like I said, is they have to look at the plans and see if it meets the minimum requirement to submit it, which is really, you know, we, I think, I can think of maybe one time that that's happened in 650 files that we've done. And after that, it's going through the resource areas, checking the resource areas with what the applicant has put out there, and going out there field-examining as well. If there's a conflict or if we can't come to an agreement on the line, then she does And then, like I said, she'll go, if she doesn't have the, like, if the Commissioner asks a question, she doesn't have the answer, she'll research it until she finds the answer, and she has no problems calling DEP, and they're very helpful to her if it's needed.
Your letter indicated that Reading, Linfield, and Saugus all have full-time Conservation Agents.
Right.
So last year, Wakefield had 26 meetings.
Right.
And the Conservation Agent, at least one of the agents came to all of your meetings?
Right.
And helped prepare the meetings and participated at the meetings. So we have a part-time Conservation Agent. Reading, Linfield, and Saugus have full times. So last year, Wakefield had 26 meetings, '25 and '22 and '22 and '21. I noticed in comparison that Reading had 22 meetings last year. Linfield only had 15, and Saugus only had 12. So what really was compelling to me, and I know that's just one component of the responsibilities of the Conservation Agent, but I think the fact that we're operating with a part-time Conservation Agent and our agents are having to participate in twice as, more than twice as many meetings as Saugus, and almost twice as many meetings as Linfield, is pretty telling to me.
Right.
Was there anybody on the Conservation Commission that did not think that you needed a full-time employee?
No, I think we're all in agreement with that. I mean, we're not, we don't have the time to... I mean, we're not, we don't have the time to do anything. We're always responsible for open space and recreation, so we have an open space and recreation plan, we're now getting it reapproved, because it's only good for five or seven years. And that allows us to get grants. Now Rebecca had already filed one with councils, and we weren't successful in getting it, but that's, that's what we've been trying to, that's another thing that she does. She's trying to find grants and get some stuff to, you know, make some play areas or do something for the town, for the kids. So she's, she's active in that. There's a lot of stuff like that she's active in. What else can I think of?
Do you find it difficult for the Conservation Commission to do its job with the current status of only having part-time conservation agents?
We, we have, I mean, Rebecca does the stuff, she'll take the stuff at home. If she needs something done on a timeframe or something like that, she'd take it home and do it, and bring it back to all the commissioners. I mean, she, she'll do it on a Saturday or Sunday. I'm amazed that her day off, she'll, I don't know how much time she puts into this stuff, but she's not getting paid for it. And I know she's doing it on her own, but, I mean, she's a good employee, and as far as that goes, she's a benefit to the town. The same thing with Elaine. I mean, these are two good people that have worked hard for this town. I don't know what else to say.
Thank you for coming back to the table and answering my questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Counselor?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair McLean?
I'm sorry, Ms. Luciani, did you?
Just stay at the table, it's okay.
Not tired of me?
The man of the hour. You indicated that Councilor Vincent asked, you know, whether there, we have more meetings than other towns.
Mm-hmm.
But the question to me is, you know, do those meetings count for the hours for the employees? I assume they count?
Yes, they do. Yes. So she's at a meeting for two hours, it's, yeah.
Yeah. And nobody should eat time, in my opinion. Are you saying that the employees are working beyond their hours on their own time?
I have to say...
I see heads nodding, but I mean...
Yeah, I mean, yes, they do. They do. I mean...
Are we hiring outside experts more because the employees don't have enough time? Or is that a separate kettle of fish?
With the last couple of projects we've had, we've, we've had a few, you know, experts in, because, you know, we just need it. We can't, we can't decipher some of this stuff.
Right. Some of this material may be outside of particular individuals' expertise.
Yeah.
I was just curious as to whether sometimes we're hiring people because we don't have the hours for the employees. That may not be the case.
No. We try to hire the, the only, we need the experts of certain things, and that's, we hire them for what we need. You know, it's usually the storm damage protection, stuff like that.
I'm not aware, not that I'm in your business, I'm not, so you'll have to tell me, but I'm not aware of hearing complaints that things aren't being gotten to.
Yeah.
And I'm just curious, you know, are, do we have a backlog of work that's not being gotten to because the employees don't have the hours to put in?
We're able to meet the minimums that we have to do. I mean, we're, we hit all the timeframes that we're supposed to. I mean, you've only got 21 days to set a hearing date, and then 21 days after that for the, you know, to write an order or whatever, denial, whatever you're gonna do. So, I mean, we hit those timeframes, but the problem is, we can't do anything extra. We can't do anything out of the open space and recreation plan projects. We've looked at these things for years, that I, you read them, and, like, we'll do surveys, and then one of the things they'll say is, are you interested in more land in Wakefield, open space? All the time it comes back, yes, we want some open space, but we're not able to follow this stuff up and, and try to do something. The time isn't there to do it, even to write, even to write for grants. I mean, one grant we've written in 40, in 40 years, or whatever, 30, whatever years it is. I mean, that's not, you know, that's not, I think we could do more for the community, you know, we, and we've started in that direction. I mean, with Rebecca working the way she's been working, she's, she's catching up on stuff that we weren't able to do.
So you're saying more could be done on the open space front?
More could be done for the benefit of the town. I'm saying more could be done for the benefit of the town and the kids in the neighborhood, and, you know, playgrounds and walking paths, you know, hiking paths. We've got a group together that's doing some of the trails, you know, marking trails. So, and we want, and we've got a list of, you know, what people want to see to go with that, and of course, if they want a bathroom, they want a place to park the car, and they want, so it takes, all these things take a little bit of money to get them put together, but we'd like to do that. We'd like to get, maybe get one trail going, at least fully marked, so that people feel safe and want to go out and look at nature.
Right. And no, no discussion about, you know, our having good employees and our appreciating having them and wanting to retain them. I just hope you understand, we have to look at the whole fiscal picture.
No, I understand.
And even though we're doing well, we recently were informed that revenues are down, some of the grants we thought had been in our pockets have been cut off.
Head happens sometimes, right?
You know, revenue's down for the Commonwealth, et cetera, and there are various contracts still in town that are not yet resolved, so that's, that's our concern. I just wanted you to understand.
Yeah.
Not disagreeing with anything you say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Counselor Smith-Galvin, and then Counselor Danny after that.
Thank you. I actually agree with the Conservation Council Commission that there's a lot more that can be done in town. I think, I appreciate the work that you've done with the Environmental Sustainability Committee. I know that we have a representative on your open space plan. We work together on the Conservation Stewards Program. So I absolutely appreciate that. We are in complex environmental times. We are in a period of growth in this town that needs to be considered from an environmental and a climate standpoint as well. I guess my response is, yes, I think we need to put more resources into environment and sustainability. I don't think they, excuse me, I don't think they all need to be at the Conservation Commission level, but I do think that our town should look at a, how we can meet some of these sustainability needs and grant writing. We just came from the Mass Municipal Association. There are tremendous amount of grants out there for open spaces, for decarbonization. And so I would really ask my colleagues in the Finance Committee and the Town Manager to think about how we, as a town, can look at all of these needs, the Conservation Commission needs that are out there, and some of the needs that are coming from other committees, and have a dedicated staff person in addition to the Conservation Commission, or together with the Conservation staff that we already have, and dedicate a resource to the full array of sustainability opportunities that we have in front of us.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Danny?
That's a very good point, but I do think that the position of the Director of Strategic Growth and Development will be able to help with that, with that, and I think that'll be really helpful for that. And I appreciate all of you coming and thanking, bringing these issues up. And I, and I understand that, you know, it's, volunteers shouldn't be the ones who are kind of, they, there needs to be a staff person that's guiding you and helping more. But my question is, that I'm having a hard time understanding, is like, an 11 hours going from 19 hours to 30 hours is quite a jump. And so I'm curious, like, what would, what is not getting done that we, the grants, and what would those extra 11 hours look like? Because, you know, what Mr. Mayo was saying is that, you know, hiring when there are particular projects, you know, hiring a person for extra hours to do that when needed, and being able to find funds to do that, as opposed to having it be a 30-hour-a-week position, because it seems like the work might come up and down like that. So if, when it's up, that, because I do believe that we should be paying people for the work that they're doing, we definitely want to do that, but I'm just grappling with what would they, what would those 11 hours look like in a regular week? And would that be sufficient, being able to do the, hire as needed?
Are you asking me that?
Mm-hmm. Anybody, anybody on the commission can answer that question.
Sure.
Thank you, Counselor. So with those extra hours, I think it's important to note, going back to again, Ms. Davis has been with us for 16 years. She cares a lot about the town and conservation, obviously. A lot of, I mean, you can look back, and we're seeing more projects pile up in front of us each year, and we're seeing more and more development, and more development in more environmentally sensitive areas. What's happening is, a lot of things are happening in their personal time, in their off-hours. They're doing everything they can to make sure the bare minimum of everything that we need to do is happening. But again, that's leading to a lot of free, free work, basically. So, and again, she's been working with us for 16 years. I think she's a huge asset to this town. I, I don't think she can continue going forward, putting in so much extra time and effort where she's not being paid, with everything that she does for this town. And what we're missing, we're getting, we're hitting those bare minimums of what needs to happen, but we're just barely hitting those bare minimums and, and nothing more. So we're not seeing those grant opportunities, so we're leaving lots of money on the table there. We're not seeing any additional programs, any more additional education and outreach. She's doing everything from getting the filings, communicating with everyone, sending out the information, doing the research, following up, the whole, from start to finish, she's very hands-on and involved with everything, and has given us everything we need to be able to look into things ourselves and make our own decisions. But yeah, I think there's, there's plenty, there's definitely plenty of work. She is always overloaded. So I think with those additional hours, we would see, we would see all the minimums that we're hitting now, but everything would be above and beyond in that it will be, sorry, how do I say it? Just more complete. We'll see more coordination with different towns, we'll see more grant applications, we'll see more education outreach tools. Where, again, we're working on the open space and recreation plan at the moment. I'm on that subcommittee as well. So there's gonna be a lot of opportunities arising from that with, between the surveys we've seen from town, the community engagement that we've been involved with. There's definitely a lot of things we want to work towards, and I know we're, we're going to be seeing more and more development coming towards us. And we are, I want to stress this to the, to the entire council, that we are in the midst of a climate crisis right now. So now is the time to act, to make sure we're doing everything we can, because we're going to see more frequent, more intense storms, more flooding, more droughts. It's only going to get more intense. So we need to do everything we can now to make sure we're preparing Wakefield to be as proactive as we possibly can for this emergency that we are already in.
Thank you. That was helpful. So the grant, grant writing was one component?
Absolutely.
Which I think that the new person that we approved last year will, the new person will be able to do a lot of that grant writing and coordination that Counselor Smith-Galvin mentioned. So I think that could be taken away in terms of, you know, burden could be taken away, helping to alleviate some of the work going forward. And then you said more coordination with different towns. Can you tell me what that looks like?
We've started to see some work, just coordinating with some different commissions, seeing what they're doing, seeing what is working in terms of different aspects of conservation. There's also, there's a number of workshops and trainings and whatnot that would be great for both our agents and the commission itself to be a part of. But again, we're back to, our agents are doing a lot of this on their own time, and we've been seeing a lot of the standards being updated, which is obviously a lot of reading and researching and understanding. There's lots of talking with other agents and other towns and whatnot to kind of come to understandings of what these updates mean, and how they may affect us specifically in our general area. I've, I've lost my train of thought there, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. This is really helpful. Mr. Mayo, what is the, full-time is 30 hours? What is full-time?
No, no, 35.
35. So they're asking for somebody for 30 hours, so...
Plus the five-hour. So they're asking for a 35-hour position, total.
I thought the other person was the five hours.
And this would be 30.
And this would be 30. So it's full-time employees, it's by person, right? So it would be...
Correct.
So two people doing a 35-hour work week would not, would not be tripping to benefits?
No, no, once you go over 19 hours.
Once you go over 19 hours?
Yeah.
Okay. So after 19 hours, then it goes into benefits? Okay. Okay. Can you tell me a little bit about what is not getting done? That, is there, it's the coordination with the different towns, the education initiatives? Do you have a list of education initiatives that, that you want to be working on?
We have some ideas. We've never really gotten to go fully in-depth into any of those, because we've never really had the time.
Yeah.
And we get through as much as we can in our meetings, and we always seem to find ourselves with a backlog of more internal type stuff like that. What else?
I think the fact that you haven't heard complaints from townspeople about not being able to do the work is a testament to Rebecca in particular, again, working more than her allotted hours. So I think that's what's happening. And I gotta tell you, just the past week or so, it went, one of the most important things that Rebecca does is help towns, homeowners to deal with things. So homeowners who want, who are trying to get through to her, because she has only part-time hours, it just took, you know, several attempts to get through because she doesn't work full-time. So again, that's just an example, and I think that's one of the most important things that Rebecca does, is really help townspeople deal with the Wetlands Act and matters that, you know, that might require some expertise just to guide them through. But again, I think the fact that, unless, unless this recent person who took, took a while to get back to her complaints, is that the reason why you haven't had complaints is because she does more than she should. And I guess it comes to a point where, you know, that, that needs to stop. And I know you're saying, we appreciate the fact that the hours went up last year from the year before, and, but also, just keep in mind that we have never come before you to ask for this, and we don't take this lightly at all, we really feel it's important to do, and that's why we're all here, and we really feel strongly about it. And again, feel very fortunate to have incredible agents working with us, that many towns have that opening, have that as an opening, as a vacancy. So it's really, the fact that we have such wonderful people to be able to do their job would be helpful.
That's really helpful, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate all of the information that you've been providing us. It's very helpful. I would love to see the data that you had referred to in terms of your sheets and things like that. That's helpful, too, and maybe if anybody wants to review those, that would be helpful. I'm just looking for, because this is, I mean, it's, honestly, this is a, this is a hard decision, because I do see it as we do have to be very careful, is that it is, it's, it is adding a full-time equivalent and adding that much. We have to be really mindful of the budget.
Are you all set, Counselor?
I am, thanks. I just want to actually look at that, if I can just do it quickly.
So just a couple of comments on my part, and then Counsel Dabrowski, I see you have your hand up as well. First of all, thank you to everyone for coming in today and speaking through this. And I, and I do want to highlight, too, you know, I think how much we recognize the work of, you know, our staff who work in this area. I mean, I've, I've worked with, you know, I've worked with Ms. Davis on, you know, some constituent issues... issues that have come up. She's been very responsive and very good about it. And so, you know, certainly no doubt of the dedication and the skill that our team has. I'm left with a couple of open questions that I don't think we can resolve without, you know, quite frankly, a couple of months of work. You know, one of them to me is just really trying to kind of quantify the work that's involved. And, you know, I appreciate we have kind of comparisons to other towns, but I worry that we're comparing potentially apples to oranges, because we don't necessarily have job descriptions for what those individuals in other towns do. And so, I think we'd have to really dig into that in a much more robust way. But, you know, what I also want to do is, I want to start tracking hours. You know, I'd love to see data around, you know, how many filings are we getting? What is the average amount of work per filing? How does that translate out into what Rebecca's doing, what Elaine's doing, so that we actually have data on our own experience internally to try that, tack that. I think the other thing that I'm hearing is that a lot of the work that we could be doing is work that we've talked about with other positions as well. And I think, you know, Counsel Danahy, you alluded to this with the strategic growth position that we've highlighted. We've talked a lot about this with the work that's happened with the bike and pedestrian plan that, you know, Erin Kikinda and Bill Renaud have spent a lot of time on. We've talked about some of the sustainability stuff, which has also kind of found its way in other areas, including, you know, Anne Wade at the DPW and others. And I do feel that we need to sort of tie the pieces together before we just assume that we should be adding hours to any one position, because there is work there, but it does feel like it's work that is multifunctional in nature, and perhaps some of the communication internally within Town Hall isn't happening as optimally as we, as it should. So, you know, my inclination, as I think about the go-forward plan, would be to ask Mr. Mayo for, you know, you to go back, again, and this may be a future budget cycle question, but I think we need to look really critically at the work involved with the conservation agent positions vis-à-vis other positions in Town Hall, both current state based on data, but also future state based on all of these sort of multifunctional, cross-disciplinary things that we're trying to do. And maybe come back with more of a long-term strategy that, you know, may involve just adding hours to this position, but it may be sort of a radical rethinking of what we're trying to do here. So, just my thoughts as we go through. Counsel Dabrowski, I know you had another comment on the topic.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that, first off, I'll say the Conservation Commission has given a lot of their time, and I am incredibly thankful for that, and it is, as are all of us. When we look at this, we're really talking about a 50% increase in hours. And I, you know, I can't help but separate that from some of the other departments that I know have bigger asks. I know that the help, you know, we're talking about, you know, being able to do more for the benefit of the town. Well, I think probably any other department would be able to make a similar argument for anyone that's part-time, and perhaps, you know, a department would be looking for more hours. But I think it's also important that we separate the want from the need. And there's a lot of want here, and the want is cross-departments. But then it's a question of need. And, you know, there was some mention of looking at collaborating with other towns. Candidly, I'd be more interested in understanding what collaborations look like with other departments within our own town, because, you know, I do think that if there are times where, you know, there's ebbs and flows of work, or even particular projects, maybe they're better directed to another department or collaboration with another department. You know, DPW is an obvious one that comes to mind on that. And there's been a lot of talk about open space and the open space plan. I think that's incredibly important. I would like to see what role our senior planner can play in that regard. But I do also want to point out that if we can separate the personality from the positions themselves, the five-hour position, so that's currently held by Ms. Breland, she is the person that participates in the open space plan meetings. It's not the position we're talking about, Ms. Davis. And so, when we're talking about, oh, you know, open space being important, of course it is. But the five-hour position has been the one that's been focused on that, whereas the 19-hour position doesn't attend those meetings. They have different responsibilities. And so, I think we really have to step back and look at this more holistically to understand how we can achieve, you know, the maximum benefit for the community, of course. I think, there was mention about marking trails. Well, I recall, we had an Eagle Scout project that came in just recently, that his project was to mark trail, you know, for us. So, I think instead of kind of operating in silos and thinking about, oh, we can't do this within our confines, I think the better question is, how can we utilize the greater resources we have available as a town and as a town staff to achieve these objectives? And if CONCOM wants to instead come up with a list of priorities or, you know, main points that we can all try to work on that would advance the interests of our community, that's really important. I don't think there's an expectation of our council that CONCOM alone is the one that has to try to execute on those. And that's where if we can deploy the, you know, dispatch the work and deploy the resources across, you know, multiple departments potentially or multiple individuals, we can probably achieve the objectives CONCOM is looking for without, you know, adding, you know, this role. And again, I want to take the personality of it. It's not about Ms. Davis and how good of an employee she is. That's great, but this is a position, and employees can change, but we have to think about the position and how we're establishing this going forward. So, I think we can achieve CONCOM's objectives without necessarily having CONCOM have to figure out how to execute all those within the confines of their 24 hours. So, I strongly believe that, you know, this is a want, not a need, and if we need to work more with CONCOM, you know, let Mr. Mayo know, let department heads know, you know, Mr. Mayo, I know you have department head meetings, let's figure out ways that we can make sure that things are getting done and we're able to pursue some of these projects that CONCOM feels like they're not able to do currently. But I do not think that this is the way to reach that goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dabrowski. Any other questions from the council?
I'm gonna, I thank all my colleagues for asking lots of the questions that I had. I think I'm going to echo something that Counsel Chine said and Counsel Dabrowski said, is I think, you know, a few of us went to the Mass Municipal Association this weekend, and the theme really was climate change, as Counsel Smith-Galvin mentioned. And I think there's such an opportunity, kind of to amplify what Ed just said, like, some of our departments are pretty siloed, Steve. I think this is an opportunity to break down some of those silos. So, with your departments, with the work Erin does, engineering does, Conservation Commission does, and then the stuff that, you know, the new strategic director will be doing, I think there's such an opportunity for kind of overlap and kind of collaborating together, including using the Environmental Sustainability League group. They're just, and I want to just echo what Julie said. I think we've been talking about this for years, but a dedicated person getting grants would just be so useful, because there's so, I mean, billions and billions of dollars out there. I think every single speaker talked about that. I think there's such an opportunity for us to build on the work that we're doing. But I think breaking down the silos would be really helpful, and I'm going to ask Conservation Commission, you know, you have, it's hard when we see the work is being done, and I understand, personality-wise, people are putting in the extra hours. But I think that list of what you're talking about, of the other things that you would want to do, like, let's share those, because those are the things that we can talk about in these other meetings that we're going about, and talk about how do we get that done. So, I think it's kind of on you, Steve, really, to think big picture and do some reorging of, you know, roles and responsibilities and kind of map out what we want to prioritize to start really coordinating our response to climate change. Because Haley's right, we can't wait. We need to, you know, we're already behind, and we've done nice things, like with gas and light, we've really done some good steps, but there's just a lot more that we need to do.
Thank you. Any other final comments? Counsel Danahy?
My last comment is, is that we're discussing this, I almost think that it is making the argument to have that position, those hours added for the cross-collaboration across departments, because, you know, Conservation Commission is some of the most important work that goes on in our town, and especially as we have more development. And I love the idea of the cross-department collaboration and the cross-town, but if this employee is, if it's only a part-time position in Conservation Commission, then working with all the other people who are in full-time positions, then I don't think that that's a good balance. So, that actually compels me to say that we would, should add the hours.
Counsel McLean?
This is a very close call, I believe, for a lot of us. And my initial inclination, as we entered this process this year, was that we should be more conservative relative to adding FTEs. But I do this for a living, and sometimes people close me, you know, with an argument. And I think you folks have done it tonight. I think that I agree with the sentiments Counsel Danahy has expressed. I often hear we're going to do things in the future, and I'm not being critical of anybody, you know, and that Steve can go back and we can get out of our silos, et cetera. But I think this is a need now, and I think you've made your case. So, I'm, you flipped my vote.
Great, thank you. Any final comments? All right, thank you. We'll move on to item number five C, fire alarm and traffic signals.
The fire alarm and traffic signal budget, we're recommending an increase of $2,000 over the current fiscal year. The $2,000 increase is in the materials and supply line item, and it is due to increased costs. This department has been very busy with ongoing new development, doing utility pole switch-overs and replacing aging traffic and dispatch equipment. They also maintain traffic signals at intersections, municipal fire alarm boxes, and also master boxes, which are at private businesses. We do charge a fee for these master boxes. They are $225 a year. There are approximately 170 boxes, and we collect $35,000 annually. The total request for fiscal '25 is $72,511.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five D, the Emergency Management Department.
Emergency management, we're requesting an increase of $1,726 over the current fiscal year. This increase is all in personal services and is a 3% increase for the Emergency Management Director. Main expenses within this budget under contractual services are $10,000 for the Emergency Operations Center, which is at the Public Safety Building, and this is used to upgrade service and maintain the equipment in the control room. And there's a $16,000 line item for the notification system, which is the reverse 911 or code red system that residents receive a phone call in case of an emergency. The total budget request is $92,253. I do want to point out, on the second page of the budget, there was a typo for year-to-date expenses. $13,857 was key to the wrong line item, that that should have been in the notification system line item, not the Emergency Operations Center.
You've anticipated my question, Kevin, thank you. Any comments on the Emergency Management budget? All right, seeing none. Item five E, inspectional services.
The inspectional services budget, we are recommending an increase of $15,195. Of this, $13,695 is in the personal services line item, which is for contractual and negotiated increases for the supervisory union employees, and it also includes a step increase for one of the clerical union employees. And there's a small increase under contractual services, $1,500 in the vehicle allowance line item. This is a contractual item and is based on usage. Main expenses within this budget, the vehicle allowance, $8,100. The printing line item, $1,500, which is used for various applications, and $5,000 for telephone, which is for cell phones and internal phones. I do want to point out that this department does collect revenue. Last year, we had an all-time high in revenue, $1,358,000 year-to-date. So far in fiscal '24, we've surpassed that, and we're up to $1,477,000. The total budget request for fiscal '25 is $482,638.
And Kevin, the revenue is from permit revenue, so I assume driven by the development at the Head of the Lake.
Head of the Lake was a big one, yes.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
I just want to make sure that we have, if we need it, and I don't know that we do, there's training on the Opt-In Stretch Code, the Opt-In Energy Code in here. That's going to go into effect in July, and I know there's a lot of trainings going on. So, if our inspector needs any support on that, I want to make sure there's funds.
And they'll be training in our budget as well.
Okay, so, okay, so he'll have access to that. Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, as Mr. Mayo mentioned, we'll defer items five F to a future meeting. Item five G, streetlights.
Streetlight budget, we are recommending level funding from the current fiscal year. We'll point out, seven years ago, the municipal light department did receive a state grant where we replaced all the town streetlights with LED streetlights. There was a saving, seven years ago, to this budget of $25,000. Once the capital costs are recovered in a couple more years, there will be additional savings to this budget, probably in the $30,000 a year range, bringing this down to about $158,000, thereabouts. The total request for fiscal '25 is $188,131.
And Mr. Gill, you said in a couple of years is when we recover that initial capital?
2027.
2027. Fiscal '27 or calendar?
Fiscal '27.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Seeing none. Item five F, the Historical Commission.
The Historical Commission's budget, we are recommending level funding. Main expenses within this budget, $1,030 for printing, which is used to advertise the meetings, and $500 for other materials and supplies, which is used for signage repairs and upgrades. Total budget request is $2,000.
Any questions from the council? Counsel Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. I just wanted to add that as the liaison of the Historical Commission, I communicated with their chair, Nancy Bertrand, and she was fine with this budget. I also want to note, I know Counsel Dabrowski does an excellent job of articulating this at town meeting. Often, there's folks at town meeting that have a little bit of concern about the budget for the Historical Commission. I do note that last year in ARPA money, we allocated $25,000 to do title searches for historical buildings and homes. We also allocated $10,000 to go get the repair estimate for the Soldier and Savior Civil War Memorial, and then the town, at town meeting, allocated $300,000 to repair that memorial. So, often when, and the gazebo is currently undergoing repairs as well. So, when the town recognizes the need to repair historical structures and whatnot, we find the resources to do that. We don't necessarily budget the Historical Commission and say, you're the ones that have to go out and get that done. They have a responsibility under Massachusetts General Law to deal with the demolition by law, and therefore, a lot of their expenses in that $2,000 is sending out notices, posting notices, postage, things of that nature. So, I think the budget that is allocated to the Historical Commission is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Vincent. Other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five I, unemployment.
The unemployment budget, we are requesting level funding. We do break this budget out, $25,000 for the town, $50,000 for the school department. The total budget request is $75,000.
Any questions from the council? Counsel McLean?
One quick question, Kevin. Looks like the 75 was already expended in half-year. Is that common, you know?
No, we are playing catch-up from some of the bills that we have been getting for Probably since the beginning of COVID, there were a lot of fraudulent applications. When we got our bill, we paid what we thought we owed, and we're currently reviewing, catching up on some of the items that, even though we don't agree with, we do have to pay. And that's why we did catch up so far this year. The $75,000 that's spent to date, we have an agreement with the schools that the vast majority of the expenditures fall to the school, and they will pay for anything over and above what's in this budget.
Okay, so, we're safe. We're safe budgeting.
Yes.
And I might add, there are still a number of outstanding bills from the state that I'm... I'm not going to pay with the promise that, well, when we collect the money, we'll get it back to you. So as I said, you may come visit me someday, somewhere. So we're challenging all of them.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Other questions? All right, seeing none. Item five J, reserve fund.
The reserve fund budget, we're recommending level funding for fiscal '25. This budget is used for unforeseen, unbudgeted, or underbudgeted expenses. The total budget request is $400,000. I will point out that tonight, tonight's budget, the first budget we did tonight, the treasurer's office, we will be doing a reserve fund transfer at the end of the year due to a retirement and a payout for vacation and sick leave buyback. So probably somewhere in the $20,000 to $30,000 range, we will be coming forward on that.
Questions or comments from the council? And maybe just a review for the public. So for anything coming out of the reserve fund, my recollection is that is based on a vote from the finance committee?
Correct.
All right, seeing no other questions. Item five K, professional medical.
Last budget is the professional medical budget. We're recommending that this budget be increased $2,000 over the current fiscal year. This $2,000 breaks down $1,500 to the tax levy and $500 to the water and soil transfer. This increase is all due to increased cost of these services. The medical exams are more expensive. Total budget request for fiscal '25 is $15,300, with $11,500 coming from tax levy, $1,900 coming from a water transfer, and $1,900 coming from a soil transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Any questions from the council? Counsel Dombrowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gill, is the 15% common for us each year, or is that a bit of a departure from years prior?
It is a little bit of a departure from years prior, but the medical exams that they're giving out, they seem to go up anywhere from $10 to $20 each, and we do do quite a few of them every year. So it adds up.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, I will say, just putting on my non-town council, but professional hat, you know, the labor market for these exams is tight. So I'm not surprised to see the cost per exam going up as we have. Any other questions on professional medical? All right, seeing none, we will move on. So I will ask for a motion for approval of the budgets as recommended for every budget except for conservation commission. I do want to take that separately, given the amount of discussion we had. So is there a motion to approve the treasury, fire alarm and traffic signal, emergency management, inspectional services, veterans, sorry, streetlights, historical commission, unemployment, reserve fund, and professional medical budgets as proposed?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Counsel Dombrowski.
Aye.
Counsel Vincent?
Yes.
Counsel Danahue?
Yes.
Counsel Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries seven zero. I will now take a motion to approve the conservation commission budget as presented by the town administrator.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, discussion on this one.
This would mean that we would not be funding the extra hours, correct? Just to make.
Based on the motion, correct?
Yes.
Counsel Dombrowski? Just a clarification. So this, we're voting on the town administrator's recommendation?
Correct.
Which does not include the additional hours?
Correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote again. The vote is to approve the town administrator's recommended budget for the conservation commission. Counsel Dombrowski.
Aye.
Counsel Vincent?
No.
Counsel Danahue?
No.
Counsel Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
No.
Counsel Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries four three. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gill. Appreciate your time, and thank you to the members of the conservation commission. Thank you, Mr. Kenny, for your time tonight. Appreciate everyone's attention and input. We will move on to item, trying to read my Roman numerals, six A. Planning board referral for the MBTA Communities Overlay District. Sherri, I think we have some folks joining online for this?
Yes, I do. Bringing them over right now. We've got Jim Hogan and I think Kevin York as well.
Okay. Great. And we have Theo Knoll from the planning board and Erin Kokinda, our Community and Economic Development Officer in-house. As we're waiting for folks to come over, just to set the stage for this agenda item, the intent of the agenda item today is actually more of a procedural vote to formally refer the proposed bylaw change to the planning board so that they can hold hearings as they're required to do under the charter prior to town meeting. This ultimately will be a town meeting warrant article, and so, you know, in terms of the merits of it, you know, our intention, I think, tonight for the council is not necessarily to debate the merits, but just to make sure that, you know, we follow the process to make sure that it can go to hearing at the planning board and have an opportunity for public comment before town meeting in the spring. Mr. Mayo, anything you want to add before I turn it over to?
No, I think you said it completely correct. I'd turn it over to the planning board.
All right. So Mr. Knoll, Mr. Hogan, Ms. Kokinda, I'm not sure which one of you is kicking off, but I'll let you get started.
That's great. Thank you very much. I'll get started. I'm Theo Knoll, chairman of the planning board. It's nice to see everyone tonight, joined by our vice chair, Jim Hogan, and planning board member Kevin York online, and our very esteemed community economic development director, Erin Kokinda. We're really happy, very quickly, to discuss our sponsorship of the proposed multifamily overlay district for the upcoming warrant. I certainly want to thank the town council for all of your continued consideration of the MBTA communities law and the opportunities it presents Wakefield. I also want to thank the members of the working group and town staff for all of their work, given the very technical nature of the law and how we hope to apply it very thoughtfully in Wakefield. In terms of our process, most recently, we held three public Q and A meetings in October, November, and December. Eighty-eight people participated, and those discussions really did encompass all of the same issues and questions that you vetted as the town council in your prior discussions with the working group around this issue. We really do look forward to the opportunity to hold these public hearings, these formal public hearings. We welcome your continued input and especially hope that you provide that input and hear the responses from across town in these upcoming public hearings. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jim Hogan to give you a quick update on where we are at this point in the proposed bylaw and map.
Thank you, Theo. So Jim Hogan, for the record, chairperson of the MBTA 3A working group, as well as vice chair of the planning board. So the documentation that you guys have received as part of your package includes the overlay district that we voted on as a working group to refer with a recommendation to refer this body to the planning board unanimously, and then the planning board unanimously voted to refer to the town council. So next slide of the presentation, please. So, oh, so just as a summary, the proposed, oh, the proposed overlay district.
Oh, my God.
Go back one. There you go.
Thank you. The proposed overlay district will comply with state zoning requirements as the town council is probably aware of, the Section 3A, match general law 48. The overlay district is centered around the Wakefield Camero Station, but more generally around the downtown business area that's between North Albion and Main Street. The proposed district allows as-of-right developments for buildings up to three stories in height with a maximum of four units per lot, and that excludes the commercial corridor similar to the conversation we've had previously with this group. Go to the next slide. So the map that you should see on the next slide consists of the areas, again, around the downtown business areas. This is the same map ultimately as what has previously been presented to the town council. After soliciting all the public feedback and the public comment, the working group took that, carefully considered all some alternatives centered specifically around Greenwood, and ultimately came to the conclusion that the original proposed map was the one that the working group felt strongly was the best for the town, not just from compliance with the Section 3A, but also trying to be thoughtful in terms of where we would guide any additional development within the town, specifically centering it around our downtown business area in order to help increase foot traffic and to create a density that would help support local businesses, but also not be so inconsistent with the existing neighborhood character. As a reminder, this district encompasses primarily existing business and/or general residence zoning where two families are allowed as-of-right today. The proposed zoning would go up to four as-of-right. We did look at alternatives around Greenwood. We felt as if the, as mentioned previously, this original section around Greenwood was not conducive to compliance with this law to the size of existing lots, meaning that you'd have to go up in the greater density in order to comply. We did look at some alternatives a little bit farther to the east of the Greenwood Station, but what we ultimately determined is that we felt as if that area does not have any existing multifamily stock really of any scale. We felt that going from primarily 100% single-family homes up to four may not be, this may not be the right opportunity. There may be an alternative study or rezoning in the future date where you might allow three units as-of-right and move to four. So after the careful consideration, the working group came back and ultimately elected to recommend, planning board unanimously, the map you see on the screen, and then the planning board did the same. So if you go to the next slide, please. So as a reminder, the proposed multifamily district would allow, in theory, if every housing unit was built to the full max, up to 2,359 units. The requirements for the state is the 1696 we've discussed previously. The zone that we're looking at would allow for a 16 units an acre, which is materially consistent with the minimum density required by the state of 15 units an acre. And again, it's materially similar to the existing mixed-use zoning for garden-style apartments with the three stories as-of-right, 35-foot maximum height building structure. And then we end up proposing a zoning bylaw where it'd be the one and a half car spaces per unit requirement, which is materially similar to the existing zoning. Go to the next slide, please. So the next steps, so we're obviously here with the town council. The intent is that this proposed map, as well as the zoning bylaw, will be subject to a pair of formal public hearings held by the planning board, and then would be going to town, the town meeting in the spring. That would require a supermajority vote to pass. As a reminder, we need to be in compliance or have a zone passed by the end of 2024, otherwise the penalties identified by the state would be triggered. We believe that there's time between now and if there was, if for whatever reason did not pass the spring town meeting, we could, we would have time at the fall town meeting to regroup and try to get something passed. So with that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions at the town council at this time, and we can go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Questions from the council? Counsel Danahue?
Can I ask a question about the wording in the bylaw? Is that not appropriate?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay. I just had a question. One is that it said, under the development standards, it said planting is encouraged to include the use of native vegetation. Could you require it to be, make it a requirement that the developer has to have plantings? That would be one.
So we ended up not requiring that as a recommendation of conservation commission, or members who are familiar with the conservation commission because they're native, and I apologize to them, all the technical details of plantings, but my understanding is that native, you can fall down a rabbit hole where specific grasses that you might be able to find at, say, Home Depot don't count as native. So requiring it, my understanding becomes a slippery slope.
Okay. But we are requiring plantings, that the developer does plantings in.
I think that will be something that we discussed during the site plan review that we'll encourage and make sure, you know, they look at the town of Wakefield, which was just past the conservation's native planning policy. We do have buffer zones where we call out to have some landscaping and things like that. I believe there's wording here. But yeah, we, I won't go, it's what Jim just said, but we kind of switched those words to encourage for that reason.
Okay. But I do think that that's important, that we continue to have some green. The other question I had was that the shared outdoor space, and one of the things it said was rooftops could be considered to be part of the shared outdoor space. And my resistance to rooftops is that that would probably occur on probably maybe a three-family where you're looking at, you know, that could be the 35 feet. And I think when you're looking at dense housing in an area that has single-family houses that are going to be significantly, you know, maybe a 20-foot difference or a 10-foot difference, whatever it is, that somebody who's up on the roof deck is going to be looking down, and I think that for the privacy and respect of the people who are living in the single-family houses, I'd like to see that taken out because I think that that could be affecting people's quality of life. So in terms of the shared outdoor space, I'd like to see no roof decks allowed.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counsel McLean?
Mr. Hogan, on the bylaw, generally, is my understanding correct that the working group tried to parallel our current multifamily zoning relative to requirements, for example, 30% open space, 35-foot height?
I apologize, Counsel. Counselor, you broke up there for a second. Could you repeat the question?
Yes. My understanding, and I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, is that the working group, for purposes of the bylaw, pretty much tried to parallel our current multifamily zoning, for example, the 35-foot height limit, 30% open space. Is that, is that understanding correct?
That was the, that was the intent, yes.
And could you explain any deviations from our current zoning relative to parking? For example, I recall from one of the meetings, there was some discussion of allowing tandem parking, where perhaps we don't necessarily allow the same at present?
Yep. So there, when it comes to parking, there were two specific items that were there are deviations from the existing parking bylaws. One of them is the way that the parking is written today is that the number of parking spaces per unit required is contingent on the number of bedrooms. So we simplified it. So instead of having a threshold where if you have three bedrooms or more, you have to have two parking spaces per unit, we just had one and a half, which is what is required for one and two bedrooms for all units. So there's that change, and then there's a change as it relates to what you're referring to, where the current zoning bylaws require that any parking space has to be accessible via a, like a driveline that would not, would essentially preclude the tandem parking spaces. So we thought that based on scale, that's, we felt as if that was a regulation that was more written towards a larger-scale project than these single structures that are, you know, three to three stories with four units maximum. And we felt, we wrote the bylaw in a way such that tandem would be allowable as a parking space solution. There is a site plan review, and we did include language related to the ability to safely enter and exit the premise, which would give the planning board, which is the site plan review authority, the ability where they felt as if that the parking that was proposed by a developer was unsafe or didn't meet that threshold, we gave them the wiggle room to have that review on a case-by-case basis.
So in the bylaw, the reason for the more liberal treatment would be to potentially So, in the bylaw, the reason for the more liberal treatment would be to potentially allow more lots to qualify?
It would allow for more lots to qualify, yes, as well as we didn't feel as if you needed a 20-foot driveline and all of that pavement in order to allow for parking spaces to be allowed to enter and exit without, you know, tandem, a tandem situation.
Right. Is the section six buffer of four feet, is that in addition to a side setback of 10 feet?
I have to double-check. I believe that it is in addition, but I would have to double-check and get back to you on that. If it, how, how, specifically how it's written, if you can have those overlap or not.
And it, there's also language that indicates except as may be approved by the planning board. Do we have any, it seems to me that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that I thought this was a simple check-the-bucks situation for these site plan reviews, but it looks like now there's a discretionary element here where someone could also go to the planning board and seek an additional exception?
So, I, I just pulled up the language. So, the, the specific language Counselor McLean is referencing to is there's a, there's a section related to buffers that says, "The surface areas of off-street parking, off-street parking areas shall be set back a minimum of four feet from all buildings and side and rear property lines, except for as may be approved by the planning board. Buffers between the property lines and parking area shall be landscaped, and buffers between the building's rear and side and parking shall include landscaping and walk, and/or walkways." So, there is going to, there would be buffers that would be required, and that the, it looks to me, reading this again, that the four feet could be in, within that 10-foot setback that you're referring to, and that it would be, there would be a discretionary element related to the site plan approval of a relief of the minimum of a four-foot walkway.
Again, that might allow for certain, you know, for more lots to qualify if they need those extra four feet, except as may be approved by the planning board. And also, those could be landscaped, or they could also be walkways. They may not even be green space, it looks like.
So, the intent for that four-foot is for a four-foot walkway in order to provide access?
Okay. I am curious, too, about whether the four-foot is in addition to the 10-foot, you know, setback for a side lot, or whether, as you say, it's possible that there could be a discretionary additional four feet allowed, only because, you know, now you're getting closer to the neighbor's lot line, it seems to me. Those were my primary questions on the bylaw. I'm, I'm just curious, though, because some of these items may increase the amount of lots that do qualify. I don't, I don't understand how we know, you know, maybe you could explain it to me, how we know that only 700 or 700 and change lots are going to be affected by this, when I can look at Gould and Cedar Streets and see on two streets, see almost the potential, if all those lots qualify, for as many as almost 300 new units on two streets alone? What, what am I missing?
So, so I think the 700 number that you're referring to is that if you were to compare the total number of units that, if you took every piece of housing, completely demolished it, and then rebuilt everything to the full max associated with the law, there's a 700-unit difference between what exists today and what could theoretically be built. So, and that's based on the minimum lot sizes and what qualifies. The questions you're referring to relating to the buffers and the driveways relate to, even if we have a 4,000-square-foot area lot, practically speaking, a number of those lots wouldn't be able to be built on because of geometric constraints within the lot based on the size of the parking area that would be required, 30% open space, how much of a building's that really leave you, and then when you only have the three stories, that becomes a math game in terms of what would actually happen in actuality when you account with all those things. So, we had some language in here related to trying to make it so the parking areas wouldn't be as onerous because you wouldn't need that additional driveline that would be able to make some lot that may work in theory because they meet the, you know, they check all the boxes, but when you go to lay it out, it wouldn't work in practice.
I guess, I guess I'm just, yeah, that math game, as you refer to it, comes from the Commonwealth. It's not something, as I understand it, that we created. So, the tool that comes from the Commonwealth, I guess, just, I have some skepticism about the number of units that the Commonwealth says, you know, that, that we would be able to build. I'm afraid it could be higher, especially when we start allowing, you know, changing our zoning to allow tandem parking instead of what we would have required under other circumstances. I guess I'm just, you know, a little bit skeptical that we could wind up having more units than the Commonwealth's tool tells us we could have. That's my only point.
I just want to note.
I was going to say, Ms. Kukenda, if you want to go ahead.
Yeah, so I was the one that was behind the scenes, working with the compliance model, and there's a number of things that they calculate into this model, and I, you said you're a little skeptic about it, and I'm looking at the model right now. You know, they do remove the open space with the number of the parcels. They do remove parking as part of that. And so, when you get that final capacity number, again, this is capacity, it does pull up, you know, if this lot could, if we put in all these dimensional regs, which I wanted to clarify, too, the dimensional regs are based on the general residence. So, what you currently see within this zone is general residence, and we did, you know, pull in this mixed-use multifamily for the parking. I think the more we looked at it, we thought it fit more within the general residence dimensional regs. So, when you put in those regs as well, that's how they kick out the number of how many actual capacity could fit within these lots. So, that number is part of that equation, all those numbers are part of that equation as well.
Does the Commonwealth's tool assume two in a general residence zone? Do they assume that everything's a two, or do they go house by house and count?
No, they go house by house. They have every lot number here. There's, I, I, I should have the number of units here, but it goes through every address, talks about what the existing uses are. You know, I put in the dimensional regs, it takes out all the parking, it takes out the open space that we've added, the setbacks, and then it will tell me, like, a certain lot, I'm not going to use someone's specific address, would only allow for, if we follow all of our rules, would only allow for three, the max of three units per lot. I'm just, I just wanted to clarify, and just so you knew where those numbers were coming from.
I know where they're coming from. My skepticism is, you know, is going to remain. We'll, we'll see what happens in the future.
All right. Counsel Dobrovsky?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the working group for all that you've done on this. I know, Mr. Hogan, you had mentioned, or Mr. Noel, before you had mentioned, that there had been 88 participants as a part of this process, the info sessions thus far. It strikes me as a bit unusual that the vast majority of those people who did participate were actually, actually quite strong opposition to this, the map as, as you've presented. And I'm not seeing any modifications that reflect the public input. The map that you've shown now is the map that you had been showing for quite some time now, well before we had that, that level of, of public engagement. So, I'm a bit perplexed as to why there was no recognition of, of that public feedback in what you're not presenting to us.
Yeah. So, when we took public comment, you know, we did definitely hear a number of citizens express feedback that they felt as if the map that we presented should be scaled back. I would note that as the number of working, or the number of public forums proceeded, that became closer and closer to parity, with people who were expressing support versus people expressing disapproval. You know, I wouldn't say it was 50-50 by the end, by any stretch, but I think that when we took the feedback back to the working group, the working group expressed that they felt as if the map as presented represented, that represented good planning for the town in terms of independent of if the, independent of the state regulation or not. They felt as if this was a good zoning bylaw that would benefit the town by directing any future development where it should be in the town.
I guess, I guess, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, there was also an acknowledgement that, and, you know, I think a lot of members of the working group, based on the tenor of some of the feedback that we got, expressed that the number of the folks who were providing feedback did not, did not seem, a lot of their objections came from the fact that this, this was a perceived mandate from the state, or not a perceived, it was a mandate from the state, and the nature of their objection was that we should resist the state at all costs. And the feeling amongst the working group was that resisting the state for the sake of resisting the state, you know, felt like cutting our nose off to spite our own face. And so, there was a, a feeling that what was being, the map that you see here was a map that took a, a long period of time to develop, there was a lot of thought that went into it, and that the working group still felt as if that was the best map for the town.
Well, I, I guess, you know, I'm still perplexed because you're right. I mean, from what I observed, it wasn't anything near 50-50. It was, there's no question that the majority of those that participated in these, in these forums or info sessions were opposed to it. And I, I agree that, that this is a state mandate, but the, the sentiment that I have been hearing again and again is, we have to be at 1696 in terms of available capacity, and we're at about 2,400. So, we're at nearly 700 more units than is required. So, when you're talking about, so I don't see how we're cutting off our noses to spite our face because compliance would be at 1696, excess is at 2,359, which is what is being proposed here, an additional nearly 700 more units. And so, I, you know, I, I know that, I understand that this might be perceived as a procedural step in that the town council, without heavily taking a position, advances this on to the planning board for, for more formal hearings. I understand the logistics of that and the procedural nature of it, but I also recognize this is the last opportunity that this will become, before this council, for any sort of dialogue on this. And I, I'm incredibly concerned about the fact that we have a state mandate that is being far exceeded, and I have yet to hear, you know, justifiable reason aside from, well, we just thought it was good planning. You know, this, the working group is not a, a group of professional planners with decades of experience between them. It's a group of dedicated volunteers, and I respect the work that they've done. But, you know, the idea that when you put it out to the public, you get public reaction, and I'll say, I heard from a lot of folks, they were quite turned off by some of the public reaction that was happening, especially at the planning board, I mean, going back to November, for instance, the way, and I saw the way that they were treated, or I'd argue mistreated. I think that, that really has a chilling effect on, on public participation. So, when you're talking about these hearings going forward, I can't imagine that many people who spoke out against this found that, found that the plan didn't change at all. And the way in which certain other people were treated during this process is going to inspire a lot of future engagement by the public. But I think it still goes back ultimately to the point of, we don't need to do this. We don't need to be 700 units more than the state's mandate. And in so many ways, if you, you look in the, in the paper almost every day, we're talking about a 40B project and how we want to go to take control, once we get to 10%, go to take control, you know, of the development and be able to harness that, and we really can't with, when we're below 40% on 20B, I, I mean, below 10% on, on 40B. And now we're looking at this, and it, and it seems like we're just ceding control, really, and, and authority over, or really to the developers, because that's ultimately the net result here, because we're saying as a matter of right, you're now able to develop.
Do we have a question here? Sorry, I, I just, you know, I, we aren't talking about the merits today. I appreciate your comments.
Well, we are talking about the merits today because, because this, this is.
So, I, I'm asking, is there, is there a question for the committee? You know, you're making comments that I'm, I'm sure you'll, you know, make at town meeting when it comes before town meeting, if it comes in whatever form it comes, but is there a question for the committee today that is asking for the referral to the planning board?
Well, I was aware that this was strictly limited to questions. I thought this was a, it's a presentation where you follow up with either observations, comments, or questions. And I did ask questions, I did ask questions, I'm following up with an observation and comments. And, and so, I'm, I'm really deeply concerned, I think, with, with inability or incapacity of, of the working group to acknowledge the resident concerns. I mean, I'm one of seven that represents a community of, of 27,000 people. So, yeah, when I'm speaking, I'm speaking on their behalf, and I can't tell you how many people have reached out to me in recent months out of concern. Have you received those similar concerns from folks, that people reached out to you independently and said, you know, "I really don't like the way that this X, X or Y was treated, you know, by the planning board"? Have you, in relation to this, you know, 48 project? Have you received those, those similar, that similar feedback, Mr. Hogan, or Ms. Noel, or Ms. Kukenda?
So, I really appreciate Counselor Dobrovsky, your, I think, your observations about the tenor of the meetings. I, I think actually a lot of that tenor came from the perceived state overreach of this quote-unquote mandate. And so, I, I think there was, I think that people came with a little umbrage, and as we tried to back down and explain what the law requires versus, I think, folks' reaction to it, I think that's, that's where it took a couple of meetings to temper and, and for people to understand. I do also think there's, right, you come to these meetings with some sort of initial upfront question or obstacle, because any perception of growth is a threat to the current status quo or whatnot. And I, I do think we want to approach this, MBTA is a, a potential tool for the town to be thoughtful about how, where, and why we might want to grow in, in a reasonable, responsible, thoughtful manner. And in the same way that 40B is actually a tool that we can use to think more about development of mixed-income housing over the long term. These are two tools that can be imperfect and would take time to understand and figure out how to implement reasonably. And that's why the public, the formal public hearings will give us a really good opportunity to walk through the choices that the planning board made in affirming the work of the working group. The, the, the 2,359 number, it is a max number. It is a maximum capacity number based on the potential. And that, that is only a number. And it's from which property owners will consider what they might or might not do with their individual lot, up to a maximum of four, four lot, four units on that, that said lot, depending on the geometric constraints or what, what have you. And that is to be processed through site plan review that the planning board will administer. So, I, I do think there are some guardrails. I also do think residents came to the Q and A sessions concerned about traffic congestion, concerned about perhaps large-scale development, all of which is, the large-scale development is not part of what 3A is intended to do. 3A is intended as a tool to help communities respond to their respective housing shortages in a reasonable, lower-scale way that's reflective of, in Wakefield's case, being a mature suburban commuter community.
But, Ms. Noel, I agree with what you're saying in terms of tempering, and certainly, I think everyone's in disreaction, including the council's reaction when we first heard this, is why is it that the state is dictating to us what we have to do in terms of minimal development requirements, right? Because that was, that was, I think, a, a general, you know, first, at first blush. But beyond that, when you're talking about, you know, having personal residents, the resident concern was not that ultimately, okay, well, it's mandated, so we have to do it. So, the, my observation was the, the concern changed quickly from, why are we doing this at all, to why are we doing more than we have to? Like, would you agree, Mr. Noel, that that's really, that became the tone and tenor of the discussions that went on, like, why are we doing more than is legally required of us? That was, that's the ongoing concern as I keep hearing, and I imagine you as well, no?
I, I would say, we, we heard a couple disparate, disconnected observations. The one was, why do we do more than we have to? And that, that came, as Jim mentioned, more from a, what is this mandate? And not connecting it to individual observations about town. A second question was, any housing increases car congestion, and that is a significant problem that I think all of us acknowledge. I, I think the offset to that is the 1.5 parking spaces per unit. And that is only based on the individual capacity of a And that is only based on the individual capacity of a particular lot and its configuration. If a lot can't accommodate a level of parking, then there's not the unit, then there's not the car, then there's not the, the resident. So it, it got very hard for an individual coming to the meeting, learning about MBTA for the first time, to start to thread those together. And I think the public hearings give us the opportunity to go farther. The other comment that, the other disconnect that wasn't bridged by attendees was the comment about housing closer to our commercial downtown, and why that is a really smart, thoughtful planning goal. Putting more people within a walking distance to town services, town opportunities, town businesses, and commuter, and other, and the bus lines makes for, from a business owner's perspective, you've got more opportunity for business, foot traffic, business, and capture, which makes for a stronger downtown. But also, the ability to take a bus to Oak Grove or walk to the train, you're not driving, you're not competing for a parking spot. And you're, so that, things don't, things, things didn't get, we tried to help people understand the law and start to think through how some of these things are connected, and I think the public hearings give us the opportunity to help walk through that in more granular detail.
Thank you, Mr. Noel.
You make a point, in the driving, in the driving piece, you make an important point, but you also, at the same time, you're increasing capacity far beyond what is required by law, you're also reducing the, the space requirements. And so in fact, you're create, you're allowing more to be built with less parking for it, which is just going to flood the streets potentially with.
So, Councilor Dombrowski, I think, I think you've made your point very clearly. We're, we're going to move on. Do any other councillors have a question? Councillor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. I recognize that we just have a statutory duty tonight to forward this proposed zoning bylaw to the planning board. So I won't bring up the particulars that I have in comparing the draft bylaw to the Wakefield zoning bylaws, particularly in terms of parking and height. So what's your recommendation on how I should get that information to you all? Should I come to the planning board and present that as a citizen? Should I propose amendment at town meeting? I, I'm not going to discuss it tonight, because I'm a stickler on rules, and that's not my job tonight.
Right.
But I do have a couple of, I think, noteworthy things to bring to your attention. I'm just not sure how to do it.
We'd welcome a letter in advance of our public hearings. We'd welcome you attend the public hearings and raise the concerns, and I think we have the opportunity to make some technical amendments to the bylaw, but probably not go as far a field as might be desired. That would be a function of town, discussion of in-town meeting, of, of the warrant item as presented.
And this draft bylaw is going to go to the bylaws review committee as well?
Not before town.
Yes, it will.
I mean, what, no, I take that back.
Yes.
You're right, you're right, exactly. They, they will see it, they will be able to give, give comment. So, sorry.
But most importantly, the expert that we've hired to look, to redo the town zoning bylaws, will get a chance to look at it. What's his name again, Mr. Mullen? I was forgetting.
Mark Fobrowski.
Yeah.
Yep, very capable attorney, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors with any comment? Anything new to add?
It's a new question.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
No, please.
Thank you. Ms. Kikinda, I attended every meeting, or looked at every meeting, so I have pretty good knowledge of what the working group did. At the last meeting, though, I read something in the paper that I think I had missed, or I'm not sure if they missed something. It said that a survey was done. This was news to me, it was reported in the item. Did we do a specific survey?
No, there was no survey that went out. You know, we had a number of public info sessions, but we did not have a survey that went out.
Right, okay. Okay. And, and I would just say, Chairman Noel, that at that last meeting, it was made quite clear that one of your members, I won't say the word he used, but he was annoyed that this plan that's being proposed was being questioned after all the time that was put in. Many of us put time in, and I think it's a bit of a misrepresentation to say that this was all about people who didn't understand. I think the public did understand. I think, as Councillor Dombrowski has indicated, the sentiment in the majority, at least there, and I don't know what's going to happen at town meeting, was, we should do the minimum. It wasn't, we shouldn't comply, there might be a couple of people in that renegade status, but I had brought up, you know, the minimum, and I said, you're more likely to get votes if you, if you trim this down. Some of these are outside the half mile circle, some of these properties. Some of them, I think Gould Street, does it go right to the end of Gould? It's, it's, my house is .36, and some of the houses in this district are well beyond where, where my own particular house is. You know, you've got, you've got that upper right-hand corner outside of the circle. I think Gould, if you go down to the end of Gould, it's, it's about, you know, almost .5. You know, and, and there are 137 buses running up and down Main Street. So I mean, there are a lot of points to be made, I'll say them for the town meeting. I am opposed to doing more than the minimum. If anybody's paid attention and knows my public stance on this.
Thank you. Any other councillors with questions? Seeing none, I will take a motion to refer the proposed bylaw to the planning board for hearing prior to town meeting.
Zom.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussions on the motion? Councillor Dombrowski, is this something new?
I just want to be clear that this, that this is a procedural vote in nature, it's not an endorsement or anything of the sort.
Correct. Correct. We are following our obligations under the Charter.
Exactly.
All right. We'll take a roll call vote on the motion to refer to planning board. Councillor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Councillor Vincent?
Yes.
Councillor Danahue?
Yes.
Councillor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Councillor McLean?
Yes.
Councillor Butt?
Yes.
And myself. Yes, motion carries 6-0 with one abstention. Thank you very much. Appreciate the time this evening, and, you know, regardless of folks' position on the bylaw itself, I, I do want to highlight, there has been a lot of work that's gone into this, and a lot of sweat equity on the part of the planning board and the other members of the working group, and, and that work is, I, I dare say, appreciated by all of us regardless of, of individual positions on the, the proposal itself. So thank you, Mr. Noel, and, you know, thank you, Mr. Hogan, for, for everything you've done on this.
Oh, thank you very much.
We know you guys are volunteers too, so we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Kikinda, we thank you too.
Well, no, I will. I don't need to thank you.
This is kind of a job.
My job.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take the liberty to switch the order for a moment, just given, Mr. Mullen, that you're with us for the duration in general, so I'd like to invite Dennis Fazio and Joe Conway from Public Works up for item 6C, the tree and vegetation policy. So thank you very much for your patience and for, for waiting this long.
Anytime. Thank you for having us here. Good evening, everybody. Cheers to you, Councillor Dombrowski across the pond. So my name is Joe Conway, I'm the Public Works Director. With me tonight, Dennis Fazio, park, forestry, and cemetery supervisor, here with us at Public Works. So a couple of things we have on the agenda tonight to go through with you all. We'll cover a little bit on some tree plantings, some related information, excuse me, related to removals. We'll briefly touch on some information related to roadside plantings and flowers, and then we'll wrap it all up with some things that are going to be happening in the very near future, and some metrics to kind of bring this all full circle. So if I can, while I start this, really quickly, Dennis is probably the most recognizable person that we have on our staff. I don't think there's anything that's happening outside as a function either on the common, related to weather, you name it, that he's not there. He's certainly probably our most recognizable, right? One of the things that I don't think gets mentioned a lot of time is some of the value that Dennis brings to the town, so I just wanted to touch on that really quick. So Dennis is the supervisor, as I said, of parks, forestry, and cemetery. I don't want to age him, but I'm going to, I'm going to say that he's had a 27-year career with us so far, and overall, he's had a 30-plus year of forestry experience, but I believe that number is closer to 40, if we really get down into it.
He started as a child, though, so, I mean.
It started on, what, a moped riding to Redding to do tree removal, tree ward.
Yeah, actually, you know, to go full circle real quick, one of the conservation committee members, Bob Romano, had sold me a car when I was 14. So my, my initial drive for forestry was actually to get money to put that car in the road when I got 16. So I started working in Redding at a private tree company when I was 14, all through school, high school, college, then a number of full-time years after until I came to the town. So, yeah, it's been a good ride.
So under Dennis, since he's been at the helm of the Forestry Division, we've been fortunate enough to be awarded Tree City USA for 22 consecutive years, right?
This will be our 22nd.
And then one of the things I also wanted to bring up, which unfortunately timed up kind of in the middle of COVID, but in 2021, Dennis was voted Mass Tree Warden of the Year. That is something, there's 359 tree wardens in the state of Massachusetts, and Dennis was picked as, you know, the top. Unfortunately, there's usually some pomp and circumstance, and a little bit more of a, you know, public recognition of that. But with everything being shut down, the way it was operating, kind of funky, I feel like that got lost. So I could take the chance to get that in here tonight, I made sure that I would. Outside of that, our Forestry Division is actually a three-member division from our Public Works labor force. Their focus is primarily on, you know, forestry-related tasks. I could tell you that, much like snow and anything else, if we got a hurricane or something bad, everybody becomes a Forestry Division employee. So that's just a little snapshot, kind of of the division as a whole, before we get into things, just for some context.
I would add too, the members that we have on the tree department, my foreman, Mike Shannon, he's actually a rarity in the Department of Public Works. He's had one mission, and that's forestry only, and same, he has me beat. He's been doing forestry work for well over 40 years. So that's his passion, and that's his industry standard, so, and we have two other new ones. We have Carmen, Seratino, and Tony Shankow, they're new to the industry, but good learns, and they're doing a great job, so I just wanted to give them a shout out.
So I'm just going to touch a little bit, and feel free to add color to this if you'd want, Dennis, but a little bit into our process related to forestry work. So generally, the tree warden, Dennis, his staff, will spend some time identifying hazardous trees for removal, generally around late May, so after the trees have leafed out, and it's a little bit easier to identify trees that might be dying, or other things, you know, are appropriate for whatever the maintenance might be. As they're doing that, you know, there's a simultaneous review of inquiries we get from residents for maintenance, plantings, you name it, the list is almost endless. Once they start to kind of compile all that, they'll triage the existing conditions, and then they'll do a needs assessment, and then from that point in time, they'll kind of build together what their schedule is based on those triage needs. Obviously, understandably, you know, there are things that have to happen immediately, and there's some things that get tabled to next, and so on and so forth. So related to tree removal, the council saw a memo that we put together as far as a policy, you know, related to public shade trees. I could tell you before that we went through this exercise, anything that we did have was probably incomplete and/or was probably last put together by the Board of Public Works, so it was time for a refresh. The policy that went out to the council largely influenced by Mass General Law. There are a couple of other things that we have in there too, just to highlight some of the things that we do. One of the most common questions that gets asked to us, inquiries about cutting public shade trees, I'll tell you, and Dennis will certainly say too, the default answer is no. So one of the things we realize is that, that's a resource to us that does not come back at a snap of the fingers once you alter it, and anything that we can do to preserve and protect that, we take pretty seriously. I know that both myself or Dennis have no problem, you know, being heavy on that and saying, you know, that unfortunately, you know, whatever we might be asked for, if it's not appropriate, we're not going to be doing it.
That's been pretty consistent, obviously, through my 27 years. It, it really hasn't, hasn't interfered from the policies that we've been doing, whether it's a resident asking to widen their driveway. Obviously, 20 years ago, it wasn't as common as it is now, because people have a lot more vehicles, people are a lot, you know, a lot more home, but the standard is, the first thing they do when they say, we want to open the driveway, the first thing they do is, like, we measure their driveway. We start with real basics, before we even get to the tree. We say, what's the intent? What are you looking to do? Whether the driveway's 20 feet? Have you already discussed this with the, you know, with the permitting, with the, the building inspector, you know, in there? And if, if it's not even that, then of course, then the next thing is, what's the tree that's in question that's nearby? Is it a good tree? Is it a healthy tree? Is it a dying tree? Is it, is it not? And then if, if it looks like they, they meet the criteria of doing that, we've done the same standard thing, which we put that on them. We make them go through the permitting, we would have a public shade tree hearing, we make them incur the cost of the removal, they have to get a bonded contractor to make sure that the stump is removed properly, so that if the sidewalk and curb is put back to our standards on the town, and then they have to put in a donation, which we're going to put in, at least try to get two trees in its proximity, if utilities allow. There are plenty of times that if it's a perfectly healthy tree, and it just doesn't warrant the request, you know, it, it's a no there, and, and if it has to go to a tree hearing, then we would, and then obviously, we'd have it in conjunction with, you know, we've been doing with the advisory board or whatnot, but that's our standard thing. So in terms of saying no to removals, even with people that may or may not have a, a root problem in their sewer line. So our policy has been, and I, I know that Mr. Bellinger did this for 40 years prior to my tenure, and, and they have a faulty sewer line, roots are just going for the water. We're not going to go take the tree down, which would still, they have a bad line that needs to be repaired. So the answer there is no. So they have to make, you know, different amendments to have a, a new line put in. So just proof of thought.
So just to touch on the removal piece, so as it states in the document that the council saw, essentially, for removal to happen, there needs to be cause. Some of the things that dictate that, Mass General Law, Chapter 87, that's what most of the document that the council saw references, that is basically the lane that we operate in. There are some other pieces, successful tree hearing, or then, you know, as Dennis is out in a storm, or something like that, and either him or, you know, his crew observe conditions that are an immediate threat, obviously, then, you know, removal is warranted there. Just something related to the advertised tree hearing, as Dennis kind of hinted on, those aren't automatic, and one thing important to highlight is, at any time, if there's an objection to the tree hearing and the removal, that's null and void. That will not happen unless, you know, the petitioner would, you know, bring that to this board. I don't know of any instances where that's actually happened. I'm guessing by the time that goes through that, and they get the no from that, it's, you know, not, not pursued. I can think of a few instances where we've said no. I can't remember any off the top of my head, we've actually had a petition to say no, but that's something that we're cognizant of, and certainly something that before any decision is made, we make sure that, you know, we're there to get that. One thing I just wanted to mention this really quick while we're on this, so the first version of the policy that the council got, I think through Sherry this afternoon, an amendment was made to that, it was sent out to the council. I don't think it made it to the website. So through you, Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want me to just read it, there's a couple of exemptions that were called out, they're all either references to the town bylaw, or Chapter 87 themselves. I could quickly state that for the record here.
Sure. Are these the, the items that are listed in red print?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
We do have that in our, in our packet.
Okay, great. So that was just something that was just stated to make this a little bit more transparent, specifically related to the interesting one, scenic roadways. We actually don't have any, but that is something that, believe it or not, falls to the consent of the planning board, and they would become the authority on that. I would imagine if we ever run into an instance like that, we'll be working with them hand in hand. But I just wanted to make sure that we reference that, you know, before going on. So outside of trees, I know there's some interest on roadside plantings and flowers, so this is something that we've been talking about pretty heavily here at Public Works. We want to make sure. We wanna make sure as we go into our construction standards that we update this. Consensus was from our side that where Mass General Law is so well-defined and has been around for so long, it probably didn't make sense to include roadside plantings and flowerings, you know, with trees. What we thought was that it was probably more appropriate to be in our construction standards. Some of the reasoning behind that, you've certainly heard Bill Renault and his team talk about some of the benefits of the plantings that they're trying to identify and use related to stormwater, the removal of nitrogen, phosphorus and things like that. We're also very aware that things like Envision and Albion Street is basically, you know, the, the first crack at that. So, you know, we're still kinda defining what we think the design template for downtown would be and things like that. We feel like that as those projects come in, they go through the seventy-five percent design, the final design and the public input, then that would create something that we, we'd almost treat like, sort of like zoning districts, but it's, you know, planting districts. So if we have bump outs that we use flowering plants, you know, there'll be a theme to it, there'll be a rhyme or reason, there'll be something that the public kinda weighs in on. We felt at this point in time to put that into a policy now, we put in the cart a little bit before the horse because the public will have the opportunity to do that. So I guess we're kinda like the beta testing phase of that. But, you know, some of the things that we're looking at all the time and that will certainly come out of this in the future is obviously the balancing of the priorities. So I mentioned removing the nitrogen and phosphorus and things like that, identifying and balancing, you know, some native, salt tolerant, hardy plants, you know, that aren't super, super labor intensive, but also bring a nice pop of color and aesthetics to things. So we feel like as these projects come up more and the design hearings and everything come more, at that point in time, once we kinda have the, the grand picture in front of us, it would make sense to adopt, you know, something, whether we wanna call it planting district or whoever that might be, to kinda formalize that. And then we know, you know, through these different areas of town, here's what we're trying to do, here's what the style might look like. And there'll be some symmetry to that. So I know it's probably not the, the outcome that was desired by the initial ask to look into some of this stuff. We're just trying to avoid going ad hoc into it and then, you know, having a rhyme or reason why we're doing what we're doing.
We do have, we've, we've been having a lot of discussions, which we're gonna see more of, like more water gardens to help with the filtration. So we met with friends of Lake Hornet Power last week, Bill Renault, myself. And, and so there's talk of redoing the old, for instance, the drainage culverts that are down the Lower Common. They're old and imploding, so that's gonna get done. And where they inlet into the lake, we're gonna be actually cleaning up and doing water gardens there, a few more. There'll be some additional ones with all that new work that's gonna go down at Fetsfield. So with those being, you know, multipurpose, obviously to help what's going in the lake, clean the lake, but then there'll be avenues to keep areas that would be maintained a couple of times a year in conjunction with the other ones that we had. We had a few, there was one that's down by Flora Way that was down in there and that gets refurbished seasonally. So as opposed to just being a simple wildflower mix to let it grow wild, this would actually be more, you know, planned and planted to have purpose for, for what, what Joe was mentioning.
So some exciting things on the very near future. You've probably heard me say here about our grant that we got from DCR for urban forestry. What's actually gonna happen, it was just sent to advertise this week, so we should be putting that out to RFP within the next two weeks and getting rolling on that. A little bit of delay there is, is our shift to get all of our assets into a digital platform and off of paper. We really needed to make sure that the way we have it structured is easy to keep up with and that we're capturing the data that not only we need now, but we think that we might need in the future. Outside of, you know, longitude, latitude and species and that stuff, you know, there are other considerations. We wanna make sure it's as holistic as it can be. So the exciting thing about this is we're gonna get an inventory of essentially all of our public shade trees. And one of the things we're asking for in this is to identify gaps or limitations within the network of roads. So sometimes you drive around, you know, you'll see a street that, you know, is very systematic, two trees per lot. You know, everything is very uniform and there's other sections of town that that's not the case. Unfortunately, that takes time to understand why and a big part of the limitation is what's buried underneath. I included, it's very small, but that's a picture of a house lot off of the downtown. And, you know, one of the goals, you know, that we often get asked for is two trees per house lot. But if you look at the way the utilities are laid out in front of that, believe it or not, at that parcel right there, it's not feasible. One of the things we wanna do through this grant, that we will do from this grant, is vet all of that out and then identify a punch list. Then what we're gonna do is take that punch list, similar to the way that you see some of our roadwork, we're gonna advertise it. And we're gonna say, year one, here's the planting plan, year two, here's the planting plan, year three, here's the planting plan, until we get to the end of that. I think that'll make a little bit more transparency as far as, you know, where we're going and what we're doing. We'll also link that up too, you know, with citizens to be able to request at the same time, so we can kinda encompass all of that. And then really start to take some of these bear spots where we can get stuff in and systematically work that through the town. Also without that, you know, we'll be able to increase our metrics and planting goals. And then the great thing at the end of it is the baseline and the foundation will be there with the asset to maintain digitally as we go on. Every time we add something new, something comes down, something gets maintained, that'll always be available to us and it'll be live. Right now, you know, the way we're set up, we're pretty good, but, you know, things happen. You know, we're coming from a stage where, you know, our big competition is pen and paper. Sometimes that makes it, sometimes it doesn't.
That'll be, that's actually a, it'll be exciting to have actually a state-of-the-art system. That's kind of the trend now, towns have been holding back trying to find the right program that fits. All the surveys that we've done in the past, we, we were involved with the Elm, Elm Tree Research back in, oh, it was ninety-nine. I did one and, you know, it's, it's certainly not like that scale. It's more just drive around and give a pinpoint of, of, of ten or twenty elm trees at the time. And we did it two thousand and fifteen, we worked with the DCR for an ash tree inventory and that was just really us driving around the pad of paper with a DBH inventory and calling them and letting them know. So this one will actually be digitalized, that you could actually go and see the canopy and, like, you know, Google Earth, that kinda stuff. So it's gonna be good.
So last but certainly not least, I, I threw a five-year kinda snapshot into this just to show. So I feel like when we're out there and we're doing a removal, that's very loud, it's very disruptive, it's very easy to recognize that that's happening. For whatever reason, it's still probably just as loud with a planting, but that seems to get noticed less. So I wanna include some of the metrics there as far as, you know, holistically, trees are removed for the myriad of reasons and then what was planted and then the net change. And I'm happy to say that with the exception of that microburst that we took in twenty twenty, we've been positive since two thousand and nineteen and every indication will be that twenty twenty-four will be another year following suit. So we're hoping that we could continue that for a long time. We, you know, are definitely understanding that when we work through the DCR punch list that we have, you know, at some point in time, we may not be so much on the positive to that. But anytime we take one down, if we can get two in its place, that's certainly the way that we're gonna go moving forward. So with that, that kinda touched a little bit on everything. So I would turn it over, questions, comments and whatever the council might have at this time.
Well, thank you very much. This has been really helpful and interesting and I'm, I'm really gratified by the, the chart here. You know, I, I love that as we look at twenty twenty-three, we're getting very close to that two-to-one standard in terms of what was removed versus what was planted. And I hope when we see twenty twenty-four, we actually hit that standard and, you know, maybe we set a goal of three for one in the future.
We do too.
Thank you as well for the work that's going into the, the digital asset. I, I think that's a really exciting development and to be able to have that inventory, to be able to have that level of data at your fingertips. I'm sure you guys are excited about it and I'm, I'm really thrilled to hear about it as well.
It's just like anything else, so, you know, we have, we talk about it underground all the time, but that is just as critical as an asset to us as anything else, so it's time.
I have one question just before I open it up to the council and I wanna ask about mowing. And, you know, whether we have sort of a policy or a practice with regard to, you know, what we mow versus what we leave natural, how we think about, you know, mowing on kind of active recreational spaces. Obviously playing fields, you know, need to be mowed so people can play on them versus more passive recreational spaces. Like I'm thinking, you know, for example, near where I live, you have that kind of triangular open space at the corner of Prospect and Hopkins, which isn't really an active recreation space. You know, how we think about mowing as we get closer to the lakeshore and whether there's kind of a buffer zone that we've established. Just to get a sense as to sort of how we view mowing policy or mowing practices, I guess, as we look at some of our, our town land.
So we could probably, we could talk about this all night long. We'll spare, spare you that. One of the things that's interesting, like you mentioned, the active recreation, right? So mowing doesn't seem like it's a dynamic vocation. I could tell you after learning from Dennis, it certainly is. You know, there's certain things he does, the way that he does to make sure that the vibrancy and the health of the turf is obviously number one. Related to the lakeshore and things like that, you know, generally, a lot of that is weather dependent, depending on what's going on. And then we need to sustain some growth. A lot of that, correct me if I'm wrong, where the lakeshore gets pretty rocky, especially it used to be the case down by the Flora Way. We're essentially mowing that to give it a buzz cut because you couldn't get, you know, the standard deck mower over there to be able to do that. As far as, you know, a, a policy or a particular schedule to that, I could say it depends on growth. The other thing is we tend to mow the lakeshore when it's raining out. And the reason why we try to do that is because it's disruptive on the sidewalks, especially on the lakeside. So, you know, you have less traffic, you know, we have, you know, enclosed cabs and the ability for, you know, the operator to see what they're doing and still function in the rain, so we try to time that related to that. So we're not out there in the middle of the day when it's seventy degrees and everybody's trying to enjoy that. I don't know if you wanna touch on anything else?
Yeah, I mean, the, the whole, the whole mowing, you know, aspect of it, like I said, I could, I could individually, if you guys, you know, wanted to get together, we could certainly, I could show you parcels, how and why we go at every property and how often and what we do and why. I mean, they're all, like Joe said, these are, these are living plants, so they all grow at different rates. Every field drains differently, so that strategically dictates how and what we go with the schedule with games, emergencies and whatnot. Roadside mowing also, you know, there's, there's multiple purposes for that. So in, in a lot of spots around town, we've got visibility issues so that when we do try to leave it natural, cars and trucks are two different, you know, heights. So people that are in cars, really it causes a visibility issue. So now we're, we're into weed whacking. We may have invasive spots around town where we have a lot of poison ivy outbreak. You know, we may get, we get a, a bunch down up on Sylvan around the, the drinking supply. Well, it's not something that we wanna go and start doing roadside herbicide treatments around town. We, 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 we don't, that's not what we wanna get involved with. So it's, it's, it's quicker and safer for someone to be in a cab of the roadside mower. Flows it once or twice a summer, we keep up with it, we haven't hit it, knocked it down with things. So it still has the, the ground cover, the same with around the lake. You know, as with goose control, we've gone back and forth about how much we leave, what we don't. Once we lose that, that view of the lake, it's, it's not gonna go, we won't get that back. So, so there's, there's purposes there where we cut and where we don't cut, as with every athletic park and everything. So certainly not a, a five-minute discussion, but certainly I could easily fill you in and like I said, we have.
So I, I will take you up on that. I'd love to, I'd love to kind of understand more of that.
Yeah, no, it's pretty impressive.
And I asked the question to, you know, to really, A, make sure I understand, but also, you know, just to sort of challenge, I think, some of the status quo that, you know, maybe, you know, some of the areas that we historically have mowed need to necessarily be as kind of manicured as they have been historically. I mean, I, I think we're seeing a, a change in thinking around.
Absolutely. The cover, sorry Dennis, the cover of this presentation is kind of the test case of that. So we took along the Flora Way, we did all that work in there. We took, I, I don't even know what that plant was called, but I could tell you all it did was trap leaves and kinda look unsightly when it got rabid. Wildflower mixes in there. I'll tell you that there's a little bit more handwork in there keeping some of the invasives out of it, but we're committed to making that as hardy as we can. And when we see success in that, that's something that, like you said, now that should be something where, you know, you might maintain that a little bit from encroachment onto the walkway once or twice a year and then cut it down in the fall. But that should be left to grow and color and things like that. So that's something certainly between our staff, Dennis, engineering and then the friends, that's something that we definitely wanna start to increase. We just wanna make sure that we're tactfully looking at different places and making sure that, you know, we can balance all of that.
Absolutely.
And it really comes down to man hours too. So every property we do is, is, you know, could we skip mowing? There's times that we do because we're shorthanded or backlog with weather. But if we skip that property and only do it every ten day, now when they go to do it.
It takes longer.
Twice as hard, it's twice as longer, it's more work and you're, you're killing the turf that's there, it might die out. Now we're, we're, we're going backwards, so we're not protecting the investment. So there really is, there's, there's strategic ways that we cut that actually, even though it may sound excessive, saves the town a, a fortune in, in money and the turf value. So, and we're doing close to eighty acres a week, you know, which is pretty impressive. So that's, there's a strategic, you know, strategy that, how we do that. And we're lucky, the park department is, is, takes a lot of passion and the guys that do it, actually, they get it, they buy in and they, they know what the value is for the town. So it's, it's all tangible stuff that everybody sees. So it's, it's important for everybody.
Great, well, thank you, I appreciate that. And like I said, I, I may take you up on, on the offer to learn more about the planning.
Definitely.
If for no other reason than it'll probably help me with my own yard.
That'd be great.
We'll open it up to questions. I know Councilor Smith Galvin, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I, I, thank you very much. This is interesting and I'll join the coffee to get more details. But I actually have two separate questions. One is, you know, we heard a lot from the Conservation Commission earlier in today's meeting. To what extent do you coordinate or collaborate with them? There's some overlap, it seems to me.
There is, so anytime, most of it happens either between Dennis or Bill. Anytime, you wanna talk about if you have a removal in conservation?
Yeah, I mean, we do a lot of, I do a lot of inspections for them because I'm out in the field and, and vice versa. So we, we do piggyback off each other and if I see a tree, a dead tree that's just fallen on someone's back shed, they don't wanna see us inhibit the conservation land behind it. So they're a big fan of maybe, let's get the tree, get it back in the, in the swamp and let it degrade and be an environment for chipmunks, salamanders, whatnot. So all the tree companies locally know the rules, so they're very good about calling and calling Elaine or Rebecca or myself and, and reviewing to each other. So if they get something and I'm out and I, I don't mind swinging by and helping them out and they may want an opinion on a tree and say, I, I, I think this tree's, you know, maybe okay or it's, it's starting up root and it looks like it's gonna go on the person's house. Well, we have to make a plan if we've been, if we've been unnoticed. So there is definitely some.
So, so there is some coordination happening. And I think we talked a lot about interdepartmental coordination and it seems like, to me, like this is an opportunity on the rain gardens and stuff as well, right?
More often than not, if something like that is on our radar, it's on theirs. Or if not, we're sharing to make sure that, you know, especially when it abuts conservation land directly, right? You know, they are, they're the power to let us do what we need to do and, you know, they're in place. So someone that does what we do doesn't just roll in with a bulldozer and flatten it, right? So we make sure that, you know, the two sides are kinda cohesive in that regard.
Great. My other question is around posting and public hearings and thanks for the, you know, the memo and the policy, that's, that's really helpful. I definitely understand that under Mass General Law eighty-seven, there are times where you don't do public hearings and that makes perfect sense. I'm just wondering whether this digital tool will give citizens the ability, and I've said this before, right? I get calls, people come home and the tree is gone and I think it's probably for very legitimate reasons, but people love their trees. You know, I mean, they're very much a part of the neighborhoods. And so will, will a citizen be able to go to this database and say, at twenty-eight Grafton, this tree was taken down today for X reasons? You know, and if not, can we put those kinds of just even simple lists up so that people can kind of do their own research and find out what's happening?
So once, I'll, I'll speak to the, I guess, the asset inventory first. Once that is completed, that can live as a web map up online and people can see, you know, I live in one, two, three Main Street, what's that tree?
Right.
And then there's a criteria. I think that can also, I know it functions in the way, so we have live assets and then we have some legacy stuff too, right? Cause part of knowing what we have going on now is understanding kind of what was before too. So I think, I won't speak for the JAS people specifically, but I, I think that could exist in a way to say that if the tree was gone, you know, certainly there's gonna be work order related to it.
Well, and I figure now there probably is as well. I mean, Steve, I don't know whether there's a low-tech way to do it now, but just kind of, you know, what's, what's coming up? If it's going to public hearing, that's fine, because, right, it'll be posted on the tree seven days beforehand. But it is. seven days beforehand, but it is shocking to come home and have a tree be gone.
I think that happens very rarely, though, is it? Very rarely, usually they, there's a, there's a face-to-face.
Really? Do they just call me instead? I mean, I don't, I send them to you.
So honestly, I, I, I mean, typically what's happened is, and this is nine times out of 10, there's, the residents called because a limb has fallen out of the thing, landed on their car or their driveway.
Yeah, and they want the whole thing down anyway.
So we go and we, we, we take care of it, we trim the tree, we talk to them, so there's been interaction there. We'll go back and that tree gets trimmed a number of times before, maybe when the crew's there, they see something up in the cavity that we don't see from the ground. At that point, again, very rarely can we just pull up to a tree and take it down because people have cars out in the street.
And you just did this in my new, right in my yard, I know, I've been through the process quite recently.
We have cars in the driveway, we have the thing, so they get a notice that says that we're going to take this tree down. Typically, we try to even knock on the door and, and there's a, there's usually a report nine times out of 10, unless it, for some reason, it was in, you know, a day, the tree was split in half, and there was a rarity, there was no cars. I haven't had to tow a car for an emergency in probably 25 years, so, and then typically there's the, the big white X on the tree that, you know, if we're a few days out or a week out, we put that on.
And is that what you're saying by the seven day, that's not the public hearing notice, that's something else saying it's coming down?
That's just, just so there's no confusion and that's, you know, if we have a contractor in town and we say we're going to, we're going to send them over to 25 Emerson, they know right there, there's two Norway.
Like a surgeon, so they don't take off the.
There's one that's dead, they know, they get it, but the big white X, they, yeah, they get it, you know, so.
It was the other lake.
It was supposed to be the other lake.
Yeah.
Okay. And then my other question is just on the widening of roads, like what constitutes a proper official?
Honestly.
Is that state language?
Yeah, it, it's probably however it existed, I could tell you, anytime that we've done it to widen a road, we default to a hearing anyway. I'll give you a good example, Byron Street, we identified a couple that we needed to get out of the way to maneuver some sidewalks and do some things, and the neighborhood actually didn't want them to come down, so we shifted and redesigned around it and preserved the trees.
I remember that, okay.
And that was a, we haven't had the numbers at a hearing myself. Again, I'm, I'm going 27 years. That was, the entire neighborhood had been, had been calling and repeatedly, so, yeah, technically, we could have just steamrolled through them and said, this is a road betterment, we don't need to have a hearing, but I don't think that would have been good business. So we had a hearing, it's more of an, you know, informational thing, and we had probably 15 residents there that were very upset and concerned, they, they were passionate. We had trees in front of the library that were completely rotted and gone, and not one person showed up for that hearing. Typically, the people that want the tree out are very concerned, where they ask, do I have to go and pursue this? And they say, no, we have your, your written letter and, and we present it, so that's why we had that one.
Thank you. Thanks for all you did.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Councilor McLean?
I, I do curiosity, Dennis, when you replace trees like on North Emerson, you know, the new sap, little saplings, what tree are we using? And is it because it's less height or less of a root system?
So we've been trying different things, real quick, so when we're doing road improvements, we've been working in tandem with the light department, so that, you know, I can't take full credit for all the trees that we're planting.
Well, I wouldn't know, you can if you want to.
They're planting, I'm going to say, I personally planted them all, no, they, they're, they're helping out, so we got a really good program. So when we're going in there and, and their trimming crew, us, combination has, has, has come up with what trees are really bad, and like, you know, in Greenwood, when that macrobrist went through there, what was left was really trees that had been compromised, one leader left. So we really just came to the point where we say, this one's got to go, foolish to leave two more that only have one limb on it. So we're making that clear cut, and then we come in, both of us, we're putting smaller, shorter species on the wire side, and I'm planting taller ones, oaks, maples, pin oaks, sycamores, stuff that can get 80 feet tall on the non-wire side. And we've been really trying to do the two per house lot, our standard, which has been our standard in town, and, and, you know, it's almost like the project just at that point, steamrolls, and all the residents in the neighborhood have been buying in, so they, they go from, you know, devastation to full new trees and they, it, we get, we're getting a big response, so.
Is there a particular tree, though, that you use for the, for the shorter ones?
So some of the trees that we're planting, yeah, we've been doing service berries and some flowering ones, so, I mean, obviously in 10 or 15 years, they might not have the height, they'll start getting wide, so we will have some trimming issues, you know, but some of the trees that we've tried on, on even Emerson, they were slow-growing maples, they're extremely slow-growing, so we probably won't go with them. Norway maples are on the invasive species list, every year they're adding two or three species to the list, so what, what I could order in 98 and 99, I had a huge list of trees we could order from now, it's very limited, and the DCR has just been constantly, you know, hitting us up with all the species that will probably, most likely be off the list and are, are problematic, so.
Well, my Norway maples are just good for the tree guys, so you don't want those.
Yeah, we can't plant those anymore, so.
They fall down.
Yeah. Well, they, they were a 37, 30-year tree, so all the trees that were, you know, that Mr. Bones had planted in 72 and 74, unfortunately, they just were, that's where we were at on this chart, you know, you know, when I took over, we were probably only doing 48 removals a year and planting probably 50 or 60, we were in the plus, and then what happened was all the sugar maples, all the Norways that were planted in the 70s, grew their roots, decide where they all, they lost their environment, acid rain, there was a number of reasons. So that whole age of forestry that had to be removed, that's why the numbers were more removals, barely into planting. Now we're getting to the other side of that, so, you know, the majority of our problem public shade trees now, the last, you know, last couple of weekends that we had those 60 mile an hour winds, you know, probably, probably six out of the 10 hits we got called out on were private stuff falling in the roadway. So now it's just all about getting, you know, continue to get the problem ones out and start the legacy over and plant, and, and it's, it's saving the town money and calls, service calls for power and, you know, a few, I'd say about eight years ago, what was really killing us was trees that were at fault, had hazards, we were on the hook for them, and they'd break apart during wind and snow events, well, they rip our house service off, that's, you know, it's upwards of $30, $3,200 for an electrician to come and service that back up, minus the cop and to come and re-shingle and all that, plus maybe a car damage, so it was costing us, you know, the claims that were coming to town back then were often, every time it was windy or snowed or, you know, and now we're getting less and less because we're at the new generation of planting here.
Great, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Jabarski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Director Conway and, and Mr. Fazir, this is super helpful. I'll, I'll say that, you know, Dennis, I think you've taught me almost everything I know about trees, including the caliper that you use to make sure it's the right size, but I, I think Dennis, one thing that I, I really want to commend you on is the fact that you're very thoughtful about the way in which you approach new tree plantings in our town. I know a lot of other communities, I won't name any, but they'll have like a blitz where they'll plant a bunch of trees, and you and I have discussed like how they're often kind of like little tiny trees or scrawny trees and, and not really like, I mean, they might, the numbers may look good on paper, but in terms of, you know, whether they're like significant and substantial and going to really make it, I mean, that's another question. You're really thoughtful about, you know, the different varieties of trees that we, we plant, because you point, I, I mean, you point out that if, if we have a certain like, you know, infestation or disease to what type of tree, you don't want to wipe out a whole street, so that's why you have a variety of what you do. So I, I just think that your expertise has really brought the town to a very, very good place, but I think those numbers are outstanding. I know that Director Conway always wants to see them higher, we often talk about trees, and I know that we'll continue to see them growing, but I think just because you've done a phenomenal job, so, so thank you for your efforts, and I have to say, just keep going forward. I know it's a priority of the council that, that we continue to, to focus on that, and there are so many benefits from the work that you're doing, so thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Councilor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. Thank you for the presentation tonight, gentlemen, and Joe, thank you for chatting with me about this last week.
We love talking to you.
I didn't get a chance to see the most recent version, but from the conversation I heard, you, you added the scenic roadway requirement language from what you alluded to.
Yep.
And based on what Councilor Smith Galvin said, it appears that the removal of a tree ordered by proper officers for the purposes of widening the highway, that got added?
Yes, so in the exemption section, those are all called out now.
Okay. Did you also get a chance, once again, I didn't get a chance to see it this evening, did you also get a chance to add the endangered persons traveling on a highway? That was the other one that's in 87.
Yes, public shade trees and bushes that obstruct, endanger, hinder, or incomode persons traveling on a highway, yeah.
Okay.
We got that.
All right, thank you very much for doing that.
Section 5.
Uh, yeah, bullet 3, yep.
Yeah, 87, 5, thanks.
You're welcome.
I will say, incomode in that section is a word that is only used in laws. Any other questions from the council before we, we mercifully let you guys go?
Thank you.
All right, well, seeing them, thank you very much, you know, for the work that you do on an ongoing basis and for, for the presentation. You know, this has been an area where, you know, we've talked a lot about the importance of kind of the natural environment in Wakefield, you know, from a sustainability standpoint, from an aesthetic standpoint, from a quality of life standpoint, and, you know, the dedication that you have to preserving all of those things is, is so clear. So we appreciate your work, we appreciate the feedback, and like I said, I look forward to learning more about mowing over the next couple of months, Dennis.
Definitely.
Well, thank you very much, have a great evening. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we will take a brief and short step backwards to item 6B, Division 2 regulations. Mr. Mullen?
With everything else regulation, I'd like Mr. Mullen to handle this. Lucky him.
So, so your, your council wanted me to look at the regulations that are in the code of the town of Wakefield. You'll recall that the code is broken up so that first there's the charter, then there's the bylaws, and then there are regulations that are passed by various boards, and your council is responsible for three sets of regulations that are in that collection. One is for alcoholic beverages, another is hawkers and peddlers, and the third is traffic control. And I think you wanted to get my and Steve's advice on what, if anything, should be done about these, given that they're kind of neither fish nor fowl. Nobody who looks at the book understands how they fit into the, the general scheme. I think that there must be a way, and maybe we could talk with General Code, which is the publisher, about this, there must be a way to make this division, this hierarchy clearer, but beyond that, and, and looking specifically at these three sections, I, I think that the first of them, the alcoholic beverages, is very long and very detailed, not the kind of thing we'd want to push into bylaws. There's no reason, it would take forever for town meeting to wade through it, and it's not doing any harm sitting among your regulations right now. In fact, I don't think, I don't think we've ever referred to those regulations, we haven't had occasion to. It's been a while since we reviewed them, I think it's been 10 years, so what I propose to do is to review them mostly for consistency with existing laws, chapter 138, and get back to you about whether there's any need for any revisions. The second section, hawkers and peddlers, is super short, it's like a page, and it was fairly recently revised, so I don't suggest that we reinvent the wheel all over again, I think it's just fine as is. That's the kind of thing you probably could push into bylaws if you wanted to, but why bother? And finally, there's the traffic rules, and this is a real mess, because this is, this dates back decades, and it purports to contain lists, for example, no left turn signs, no, no left on, on red, or no, no turn on red, and it, it contains just a handful where there are really many, many examples that should be listed, if you're going to bother listing them at all. What I think makes sense in this case would be to refer that to the Traffic Advisory Committee and to the Chief of Police. They could look through the whole thing, make recommendations about revising all of this so that it properly reflects the reality out there today. That's this council's responsibility. Now, there is more, though, because there are other boards whose regulations are represented here. The Planning Board has two sets of regulations, the Board of Health has several, but I'm not convinced that all of the Board of Health regulations are there, and I'm pretty sure that some are missing, because they, they pass regulations and nobody thinks to send them to General Code. It's nobody's fault, but it doesn't happen. The Zoning Board of Appeals has regulations, they are not in that book, they should be, and getting them in is probably a good occasion to update them. Among other things, I don't believe the ZBA's regulations contain any provisions for peer review. Generally, we've been fortunate in that applicants do pay for peer review, but we don't have the rules that we should have to back it up. The Conservation Commission, too, I think, has passed rules or regulations, those are not reflected. So I think we need to tell these boards that they should get copies of the most recently revised regulations that they have to us, and we'll get them to General Code.
So I guess I'm hearing sort of a couple of different recommendations, so one on the town council regulations, referring the traffic orders to the Traffic Advisory Committee for what probably requires a fairly substantive and lengthy revision.
And an updating.
And an updating.
Streets and signs and carving.
And the second is kind of taking a, a pass through the alcoholic beverage regulations to make sure that they are still accurate, and then the second recommendation would be working with Planning, Zoning Board of Appeals, Board of Health, and Conservation Commission to make sure that we've caught, we have everything that they've passed as regulations sort of codified into Ecode.
That's right.
Okay. Any questions or discussions from the council? Councilor Vin, this, this is like your, this is your bailiwick.
Thank you, Chair Chines. Maybe there's a distinction between regulations and policies, but what's made it difficult for me and maybe the public in researching things is these three in Division 2, these three town council regulations are in Ecode Division 2, but then on the town website, under Town Council, there's about a dozen more policies, the financial policy, the flag policy, all the, many, the public asset naming policy. Is there a reason to continue to have about a dozen there and these three in Ecode Division 2, because these are regulations versus policies?
Yeah, regulations have some, have the force of law, because regulations should, anyway, only be promulgated where there is a legal opportunity for the promulgating board to, to make them. Policies have no legal significance.
So the hawkers and peddlers is actually a regulation, not a policy?
That's right.
Because I, I think the town council was astute back in 2018, because I looked at hawkers and peddlers, and it was actually completely redone in 2018 by the town council, and the council at that time, I think, made an astute decision to keep it in Ecode Division 2. That was an opportunity where they could have made it a bylaw, or they could have taken it out of Ecode and put it in just the town council as a policy, but they kept it in there as a regulation. I think that was the right move. So I, I agree with you that they should stay as regulations and not become bylaws. I just was drawing that distinction between, it, it's just a little harder to research the policies, you have to go to the town website, you can't even just type in town council, you have to type in the word policies and then they populate, and of course, you have to go to the town Wakeville website to find those, whereas if you want to find these three regulations on Ecode, you can actually go to mass.gov and go to Massachusetts City and Town Ordinances and Bylaws, and even though they're not bylaws, they list all the cities and towns in alphabetical order, and when you go down to Wakefield, you can find Division 2 in there. So there's different ways to research these things.
Right, I think it makes sense, actually, that the policies are not in the same universe as everything else in, that's covered by Ecode.
Yeah.
Okay, because Ecode basically summarizes our town laws, and the policies are just that, they're policies. They, they set forth a preference, an intent on the part of your council, but it's nothing more than that, it's not enforceable.
Well, thank you for looking into this, I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
When we do go to Traffic Advisory for the traffic section, there is a section where the Town Council can close streets for sledding, coasting. So, please let me know if you wanted any of those on the list. Hilly in your area.
Another hill.
Yeah. But that was one thing that they did. That's how old these are, years ago. So, I thought that was pretty cool.
Maybe a good one to update.
I thought that was pretty cool, myself. I don't think we'd close a street for coasting in my lifetime.
No. Any other questions from the council or any objections to asking Mr. Mullen, Mr. Mayo, and Ms. Dalton to work through Mr. Mullen's recommendations? All right, seeing none, I think we will take that as consent with your recommendations and maybe request that when we do have some of these updates made, if we can get another update to the council.
Sure, sure. Perfect.
Thank you. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Item number seven, appointments. We have two vacancies to appoint to the Permanent Building Committee. Do we have a motion?
Move to appoint the recommended members, Wayne Hardaker and Jason Cohen.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? Seeing, please go ahead.
I simply want to say thanks to the others who applied. They were very, very good candidates that applied as well.
Absolutely, and this is a good time to mention the Permanent Building Committee appointments are on a different timetable from most other boards and committees in town. And so, we are taking appointments to a number of other committees. Sherry, I believe the due date for those applications is February 2nd?
February 2nd.
Great. So, good reminder to individuals, you know, folks that may be applied for Permanent Building Committee or else otherwise, please go on the town website, check out the many, many other vacancies that we have, and please apply. We need your, we need your talent, and we need your time. So, seeing no further discussion on the motion to appoint Jason Cohen and Wayne Hardaker to the Permanent Building Committee, we'll take a roll call vote. Counsel Dabrowski.
Aye.
Counsel Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Counsel Danny.
Yes.
I was going by memory of the order. I apologize. Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries 7-0. Congratulations to Jason and Wayne, and thank you to both for their work on the Permanent Building Committee. I do want to mention as well, we did have a resignation from, I should say, really more of a retirement than a resignation, from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Jim Bane, who served on the ZBA for, gosh, Steve, you probably know better than I would, but for a long, long time.
A long, long time.
Is unfortunately for us, moving out of town, and so he has stepped down from the Zoning Board of Appeals. We will have an advertisement to fill that open spot, assuming consent from the council today and no objection here. But I do just want to, you know, really thank Jim publicly for his service to the town. I mean, it's no exaggeration to say that he has put in literally thousands of hours of work on behalf of Wakefield, you know, reviewing every ZBA project, really spearheading the sign-by-law process and working very directly with business owners and organizations in town, you know, to help them navigate that. It's been yeoman's work, and I know Wakefield's a better place for it. So, just wanted to publicly acknowledge him and thank him for everything that he's done.
Wonderful, wonderful man to work with.
Absolutely, again. We've been very lucky, lucky to have so many volunteers, and Jim's a great exemplar of just the truly amazing service that a lot of people give to the community. So, next up on the agenda is item number eight. We have a donation of $600 to the Bebe Memorial Library. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, any objection to accepting the donation as presented? Seeing none, donations accepted by acclamation. Item number nine, approval of minutes for the January 8, 2024 Town Council meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
And any discussion or objections? Seeing none, minutes are hereby approved. Item number 10, announcements. Any counselors with announcements this evening? Counsel Vincent.
Thank you, Chair Chines. I think it's appropriate to talk about running when there's snow on the ground. So, congratulations to Karen Barrett, who was named the 2023-24 Boston Globe Division II Girls Cross Country Coach of the Year, and also to the Wakefield Boys Track Team, who this past weekend won the Massachusetts State Track and Coaches Association Division Four Relays. Thank you.
Thank you, and really great to see, again, you know, as they say, it's a great day to be a warrior, and those are two good examples as to why it's been a great couple of weeks to be a warrior as well. Other announcements? Counsel Smith-Galvin.
I just want to thank the Human Rights Commission for putting on the MLK Day. It was very well done, and just a great reflection of the community and how we can all work together and learn together. And then I guess there's going to be a service project coming up with the Boys and Girls Club, which I don't have off the top of my head.
On Saturday.
Is it this coming Saturday?
Yep.
So, yeah, I encourage anybody to go out and do that, and also encourage people to be on the Human Rights Committee, which does great work, like the MLK Day event.
And applications also due February 2nd?
Same deadline, February 2nd.
Other announcements? Well, just a couple of things I want to mention. A number of us, including Town Administrator Mayo, were at the Mass Municipal Association Annual Conference this past Friday and Saturday, which, you know, really is a great opportunity to, you know, learn from peers across the Commonwealth, you know, hear some great presentations from some experts. And also, this year, in a case to celebrate, so I know Mr. Mayo was going to mention this, but since we're holding it up, we mentioned last time, our Health and Human Services Department, in conjunction with our colleagues in Stonem and Melrose, received the Kenneth Picard Innovation Award for the regional health and human services we have here in place, and really the great work that they've done together in responding to a number of challenges and crises and opportunities in the area. So, really just want to congratulate them for that and thank them for the great work that they do. It was really a nice opportunity to celebrate it.
And what was great is even though the, all three of us, all three communities got a plaque, you know, Towns of Wakefield, Stonem and Melrose, at the opening ceremony, the screens just said, Town of Wakefield. So, that was really the best thing that we got.
We're not competitive for anything.
They'll claim I had something.
We did let them into the picture, though.
Yeah, we did. We did. We also, I will say, had the opportunity here from Governor Healy and Lieutenant Governor Driscoll about, you know, kind of the outlook for the year ahead, and, you know, a couple of things that I wanted to highlight. The governor and lieutenant governor did commit to a couple of things that, you know, certainly would represent positives for the town of Wakefield, obviously. We still need to wait for the budget to pass. But they did commit to unrestricted general government aid increasing by 3%, fully funding of Chapter 70 school aid in accordance with the commitments in the Student Opportunity Act. Also committed to $400 million in funding for Chapter 90 road programs, as well as an additional $125 million in supplemental funding because of the fair share amendment. So, certainly, you know, we'll be keeping an eye on that process as the state budget process continues, you know, working with MMA and hoping to see those commitments come to fruition. I did also want to highlight the governor's proposal for the Municipal Empowerment Bill, which is a package of legislative reforms intended to help municipalities. I won't go through everything because there's a lot there, but there are a few things that I thought were really noticeable. One is that it would codify as a permanent local option the senior property tax exemption program, and the way that the bill is written, it really codifies what Victor Santinello has created for us here in Wakefield, and we've passed a town meeting twice. So, good example of our community's leadership. It would allow for communities, local options, to look at, you know, further increases to local meals and lodging taxes, as well as motor vehicle excise taxes. Again, something that communities can discuss and debate as appropriate. It would create a training program for municipal staff, which is something that's really exciting. And we have a number of phenomenal, phenomenal people in Wakefield, but it is really hard to hire new people, and I think we've seen that with the strategic development position. And so, that's a great opportunity to really increase the pool of talent, both for Wakefield and other communities. And it would also create permanent flexibility for outdoor dining, so some of the pandemic era flexibilities we had around dining and liquor licenses.
As well as remote participation.
And remote participation. So, it would be great to see those things made permanent. They get kind of, have gotten sort of renewed on a one-year basis every year for the last couple of years. So, you know, really hopeful to see those things pass. Lots of other things in the bill, but, you know, appreciate the administration's kind of effort to help make our lives a little bit easier. So, more to come on that as well. Counsel Dabrowski, you've got your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For anyone who misses the classic line, I'm Elwood's, and this is Cruiser Woods, and we are Gemini vegetarians. Legally Blonde Junior is going to be this weekend at the Galvin Middle School. So, it'll be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Thursday, Friday, Saturday at 7:00, Sunday at 2:00 p.m. For anyone who's been at a production before, you know, it's just like incredible, just the caliber of production. So, wishing all the performers, hope they all break a leg, and I hope that you show up to support them. And just another reminder that the Blossoms at the Bebe will be on April 27th, so be planning for that. Make sure you put on your calendar, always a great event for the town. And with that, I'm soon to be signing off from London, so.
It's time for breakfast, Dan.
Yeah, 3:02 a.m.
Thank you, counselor, and as the parrot of one of the cast members at Legally Blonde, appreciate the shout-out for that one, too. Any other announcements? All right, seeing none, item number 11, any matters not anticipated for the agenda? All right, seeing none, item number 12 is adjournment. Our next meeting is Monday, February 12 at 7:00 p.m. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded, thank you. I'm going to assume there's no objection, certainly from Counsel Dabrowski in London. So, meeting is hereby adjourned at 10:02 p.m. Thank you very much to my colleagues for joining us, for the members of the public and the Conservation Commission who participated today. Thank you, Wakefield, for joining us, and have a good night.